Evening, we're calling to order the meeting of the North Andover Select Board on August 31st, 2020. To start off our meeting, I need to read a statement from the Governor pertinent to this. Statement to be made by the Chair. Pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. If you have public comments, please visit www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB Public Comments. Okay, so with that, I would like to just do a quick roll call for attendance. So if we just alphabetically and start with a Select Board member Bates. We just have roll call confirmation? You're back in queue, Laurie.
Sorry.
Hi there.
Laura Bates here.
Great, great.
Phil DeColigero here.
Thank you.
Rose Max Medeely here.
Hi.
Richard Valencourt here.
Hi there. Okay, we're all good here. Alright, so let's get to our agenda tonight. We've got a pretty full one here. First, this is public comments, and at our last meeting, we kind of talked, we talked a little bit about the process for public comments where we have a form online where folks would submit their information for us to call them back. So I'll ask the town manager, did we get any requests for us to do this?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. We do have two requests tonight. So the first one is from Nadine from Pipe Dream Cupcakes, and she is saying that she is questioning the restricted areas that are proposed in the rules and regulations. As the owner of Pipe Dream Cupcake's mobile food truck in North Andover since 2012, I already discussed this with the town at the town meeting on May 20th, 2014. Pipe Dream was allowed to park in those areas the town would like to restrict. Pipe Dream Cupcakes won the majority of the vote. I do not understand my listening question again. So she's referring to the food truck regulations that you have on later in your agenda. She had asked to call her, however Laurie Berzleff did reach out to her and explain that these regulations will not change her town meeting action at all, so she no longer requires a phone call. That is comment one. Comment two is from Tom Duncan. He has comments, and he does not want us to call him. He just wants to share his questions and comments. Good evening. Regarding COVID-19, what happens if a significant number of new cases develop from residents or students at private secondary and post-secondary schools, resulting in the Governor's dashboard moving from green to yellow to red? Is the town required to automatically roll back to one of the lower pandemic response stages? So that's a question that Brian and I will talk about a little bit when we do our COVID update. The second one is that he is the newest member of the trustees of Osgood Hill. I would like to thank the Long-Term Advisory Committee for their hard work. My hope is that with our new town manager, our director, and a newly formed group of trustees, we can collectively dedicate ourselves using the information of this report in creating a great recreational, cultural, and event space for our townspeople and the region. And that is the end of our public comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Again, we will continue to try and make our way through this, you know, this new process for public comment, and we do hope that folks step up and do participate. Okay, our first, our next item is a public hearing, and so pursuant to that, there's again a statement I need to read from the Governor relating to public hearings. This is a public hearing petition for National Grid to install underground electric conduits at Cedar Lane. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public hearing of the North Andover Town is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendee of members of public will be permitted, but the public can listen to the hearing while in progress by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 and Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Members of the public attending this hearing virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during that portion of the hearing designated for public comment by emailing selectmen@northandoverma.gov. So with that, I'll just entertain a motion to open up the hearing, please.
Mr. Chair, Rose Max Medeely, motion to move up the hearing pursuant to the National Grid install underground electric conduits on Cedar Lane.
Thank you.
Phil DeColigero, second.
Thank you, sir. All right. And the hearing is open. And do we have National Grid to give us a walk through this?
Yeah, that's me, Dave Boucher, National Grid, 101 Turnpike Street in North Andover.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, only because it's a public hearing, do we want to do a roll call for this?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification there, Selectmen DeColigero. Appreciate it. So if we could do a roll call?
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rose Max Medeely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Thank you. Please proceed, sir. Appreciate it. We're open.
Okay, once again, we've got an old cable that is in need of replacement. It's a direct buried cable, and what we're trying to do is place conduits where the old cable was. The primary cable's near the end of life. It needs to be replaced. There have been multiple cable faults. National Grid is looking to replace the cable before the faults increase in frequency. We intend to start the work project in November. The construction should take five days. We will use a directional drill to install the conduit and not need to trench the roadway. We'll need access to any utility crossing in the roadway. This will require a 12-inch hole to be cut in the roadway or driveway. Some driveways do not have utility services that we cross, but it is a possibility. Most of the conduit will be installed off the edge of the pavement along the edge of the roadway within the public way. There will be no loss of power during the construction. The project may require an outage when transferring from the old cable to the new cable. Letters will be sent out to the customers to provide advance notice. The outage should take less than four hours, and the outage can be done at night if need be. We will need to access the transformers, and we'll take directly in front of the transformers. We'll roam and see the area. If we disturb any sprinkler heads, we'll reset them or replace any damaged heads. National Grid will send a letter to the homeowners with contact information. For National Grid, that would be Chris Wellington, who is the designer for this and overseer of the project, and EJ Electric. We will provide an update to the start date on the letter. And if the town has any questions for me right now, I'll try to answer them as best as I can.
Let me turn it over to the board. Again, we've very thorough documentation in our package today, previously submitted about six weeks ago as a follow-up. We see the notice of Butters, the diagrams. Is there anything that stands out to the rest of the board to be addressed?
I've got nothing. I think it was very thorough. I think I'm fine with it. Did we receive any public comment on it?
No, there was no public comment.
Thanks, Laurie.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great. Well, if there's no other information or questions to be asked, I'll hear a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chair, Rose Max Medeely, move that we close the hearing on the National Grid on Cedar Lane.
Thank you.
Phil DeColigero, second.
Thank you. And if we have a roll call, please?
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rose Max Medeely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Okay. So with that, thank you. And of course, we'll have a follow-up to this. We move on to government reports, and we've got a couple of very interesting things tonight. We're starting off with an update from Mayor Mac College regarding their reopening. Is that correct?
I think the next thing we have is Stevens Estate, Long-Term Advisory Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Apologize for that. Apologize. Yep, you're right. So the Stevens, the long-term planning, the long-term advisory committee, the Stevens Estate, has worked diligently over these months and not without some challenges in terms of gathering, and have put together a report which they submitted to us, and I believe both Andrew Shapiro and Chair LaFond are here to present that. So again, very much appreciate, you know, all your hard work in putting this together. So we're eager. I'll turn it to you.
Thank you very much. This is Jim LaFond. Thanks for inviting us.
I didn't know if you wanted us to go through a summary or explain anything, or if you all had a chance to digest the report and ask questions of the Chair or myself.
I would appreciate if Chair LaFond would sort of give us, you know, your, obviously we all want to see kind of what your destination was, but sort of your impression and how you got to this recommendation. I think that gives us good context. So if you wouldn't mind, take a minute or two?
No, that's fine. I'd be happy to do so. Obviously, the committee had several challenges. We started, I think our first meeting was in December of 2019, and we met every other week, even through the holidays. Maybe we missed a week here or there. And pretty much from the get-go, the board decided that there were three models that would be researched in depth, and then we felt that we would open it up to other models if they were presented to us or if they became, you know, if we became enlightened by surveys or public comments. The three main models we looked at were obviously the current operating model, which is the estate would remain owned and operated by the town of North Andover. The second model was that we would look to nonprofit organizations such as Mass Audubon, Essex County Greenbelt, Trustees of Reservations, et cetera, for their, for what they could do for us as far as either operating or through a long-term lease or a management agreement, operating the estate, but the town would retain ownership. And the third was for private organizations, for-profit ventures such as Elegant Banquet's proposal last year. So those are the three main models we decided to look at from the beginning. We initially, again, started with the current model. We had Steve Foster, Facilities Director for the Town of North Andover, in. He also gave us an onsite tour of the estate. We did a lot of in-depth discussion of the capital needs of the estate. We also had Joanna, the Estate Director, in on two occasions. We also had, you know, again, on a site visit, Joanna was there as well. So we did a lot of upfront research on that model. The second model we did, and we also, prior to the COVID-19 shutdown, we had two representatives from organizations in. We had representatives, or two representatives from the Trustees of Reservations in to fill us in on what they think they could bring to the table, and we had obviously a long list of questions for them. We also did not have a meeting, but I did conduct a site visit with Representative of Acquisitions for Mass Audubon, and which, as it turned out, they were really not interested in getting involved, other than possibly with a conservation restriction. And the third thing that we, well, then we were interrupted by COVID-19. And as you all know, we were asked to, as a nonessential board or committee, to stand down. We did not meet for the core months of the COVID-19 crisis, and we started meeting again, I believe, after-town meeting in early June or maybe mid-June. And we had a few things to wrap up. We did have a lot of good information at that point in time. Behind the scenes, we had also taken a list of comparable sites that I believe was put together by Laurie Berzleff, and we expanded that a bit, contacted those organizations, those towns on our own, to see how they were managing their facilities that were in the public domain, and gathered a lot of information there as well. And then we moved on in our last weeks to re-contacting Elegant Banquet's. We also contacted, through a prompt given by Rosemary Smedele, we contacted Pierce Farm on Witch Hill, which is a Topsfield facility, but both they and Elegant Banquet's are obviously for-profit organizations. We obviously, all of the meetings prior to COVID-19 were in-person and public. After and during, or currently, we were meeting, as of this meeting, Google Meet, virtual meetings. So that's basically where we developed our information. Along the way, we also had a public input online session. You know, there were actually hard copies at the senior center, town hall, and the library, but it was basically just a open comment period for residents to tell us what they thought about the Stevens Estate and which direction they thought the estate should go. We followed that up with a flash vote survey just several weeks ago, which is a little bit more scientific, but also, again, a very brief four or five-question survey. We got very, very good response to that. I think the total response was well over 500 responses. Lot of good, you know, comments that were scripted, not just yes and no answers. A lot of comments were made. And basically, that and the deliberation we had at meetings, we came to our recommendation. So that was our process. And I don't know, again, whether everybody's had the chance to read our report, but in summary, we are recommending that the Selectmen issue or pursue the idea of an RFP for a nonprofit organization with similar goals for the Stevens Estate that are held by the town of North Andover. And again, the surveys and our comments in the report show what those are, but again, in summary, preservation of the land, preservation and restoration of the historic property, and use by residents of North Andover. So that is our recommendation. And if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, it's a very thorough report. It's really impressive. I think the time and the effort that went into it really put a good perspective there, but I really want to open up to the board here to kind of address with Jim, because I think, again, you know, he's pulling together a lot of work that folks did, reaching outside of North Andover. So great opportunity to really take a good, full look at this.
Hey, Jim, Dick Valencourt, thank you. Thanks again to you and the entire committee for putting this together. Really, really appreciate it. So just a question. So with respect to, like, the trustees of the reservation, I know you've met with them. They came into one of your meetings. So early on in the process, that was like one of my very original recommendations, and then we went through other processes, but we went to the RFP, and they didn't respond to either of the first two RFPs, and I know they probably want the RFPs were not crafted in a way that they would be responding to them. And then late in the process, before-town meeting, they came back into the picture and expressed an interest. So just wondering what your thoughts were about their proposal, and, you know, if you could, oh, just share with us some of the, some of the things that they presented to you when they came to your meeting, and, you know, what your thoughts were on their proposal.
Sure. Yeah, I really can't get, you know, I really can't comment on why they weren't originally one of the proposals received on the RFP. You know, we never really kind of went back in time and asked that question. But, you know, there are a lot of people in the town of North Andover who are members of the trustees, who are on advisory boards with the trustees, and of course, we have a few trustees' facilities or properties here in our town. So something between the RFP going out and town meeting, something captured their interest, or they were pushed a little bit more. I really, I don't know what the, what the reason is. However, we did meet with Dave Santamana and also Matthew McDonald, and, you know, we didn't really, there is no proposal by the trustees. These were information gathering sessions, you know, we asking, you know, are you interested in the property? You know, what interests you in the property? And us asking them, what can you bring to the table? And I think a lot of the answers are obvious as to what they can bring to the table. They are in the business of, as a nonprofit organization, of retaining land in stewardship for conservation and preservation purposes. They have open tracts of land with no improvements, such as Wire Hill and Ward Hill, obviously. So they're just passive recreation users. But obviously, they have the Stevens Coolidge Place, of course, the famous one that they have, Nomkeg out in Western Mass, and also Castle Hill, Crane Beach, you know, some very, very distinguished facilities. So, you know, we knew that they could bring to the table their expertise in restoration and in management. And also, the strong thing that I think most people realize is that these, all of these facilities are open for public use. Certainly, if you want to use the, you know, Castle Hill Estate at Crane Beach, you got to pay for it. But there are also Fourth of July concerts there and other types of things at that facility, and here at Stevens Coolidge, where you, they're either free or there are smaller, you know, small costs to attend those, attend those events. So we felt that they, you know, they brought a lot to the table as far as they have a very well-defined model, and, you know, that they've successfully carried that out in quite a few situations. And we felt that that was very strong, because one of the problems we saw with the current model, going back 25 years or 27 years since we bought the facility, was it doesn't appear we've ever really figured out what to do, how to run it, you know, on a consistent basis. And, but again, an organization like the trustees obviously has that expertise. That's why they're there. That's what they do. I think that, again, what forces led them to become more interested in it, I don't know, but through our conversations with them, we asked them to take it back to their governing boards and, and, you know, ask, you know, where can we be, you know, in line, you know, in the queue as far as your interests? And they basically responded that we are now very high as far as interest goes. You know, they, we've talked, whether it be a long-term lease or a management agreement, they're open to both. We, as a committee, took it off the board pretty quickly that we, the town, would ever sell the estate. That would, we all determined, I think it was first or second meeting, we voted. It was seven-nothing. None of the committee members were interested in selling the estate. So from our perspective, that recommendation would not be made. But they're fine with a long-term lease or a management agreement. They are open to events for the public, being the town of North Andover. You know, they, in other words, they understand that it would be a town-owned facility, and there are certain things that the town should always have the right to. One of them would be, obviously, use of the open space, the trails, at all times. There would be, obviously, they probably would look at it as a facility where they also would, you know, rent it out for weddings, the private events that would be part of their income stream. But again, it is pretty high on their list now, but we tried to stay away with actually, you know, doing any negotiating on what a contract would look like, or, you know, we just didn't feel that that was, you know, appropriate for us to do. Our recommendation is really not about the trustees. I would have loved to have seen other organizations like Essex County Greenbelt, Mass Historic, Mass Audubon, and who knows? Maybe they will respond to an RFP in some way, shape, or form. We'd love to see more interest, but obviously, the trustees have a presence here in North Andover, and it's high on their list. So that's the organization that we were kind of using as the feeler for nonprofits.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. And you answered all my follow-up questions in your, in your response, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. I'm not short-winded.
You know, I really was just going to follow up. I was going to ask about events, and because, you know, I know they, they run weddings, or they have weddings at Crane's, and they have other events at Stevens Coolidge. So I was just curious if they were interested in continuing to run events like weddings and other, you know, parties, whatever else, if they were still willing. And I think through your response, you said they were. So thank you.
Yes.
Let me just interject here for a moment. I know there had been some issues with the audio, so we apologize for that. Cam has been working on trying to resolve that. I will say, for folks that may have not heard Jim very eloquently walking through really the first couple of pages of the report, which really gives the history and kind of their, the process for this. And so that's what Jim had, had been recapping. So hopefully it's captured. People can get that on the replay, but it is certainly in the report. I just wanted to interject that. So let me open it back up to the rest of the board, please.
Mr. Chair, Rose Max Medeely, I was being texted, and now I can be heard. Jim, sorry to ask you to do this, but could you just, because people were texting, they're kind of upset they couldn't hear, but if you could just hit the main thrust of the decision really quickly, at least bring them back in a little bit.
Sure. You mean, you mean why we came up with our final recommendation?
Well, I don't, they didn't hear, I don't believe the public heard any of your presentation. So just a real quick summary, and then, as the chair said, they can also read the report, but I think they were...
The summary is, yes, the summary is that we strongly looked at three models to run the estate. The current town-owned, town-operated model, a town-owned, nonprofit, managed through either a long-term lease or management agreement, or town-owned and long-term lease or management agreement with a for-profit organization. The for-profit companies, we basically ruled out that we thought that their reason for being is different. Their mission is to make money, turn a profit as much as they can. We didn't see any reconciliation between those, you know, between that mission and ours, which was public access, historic preservation of the buildings, and, and preservation of open space. The reason we shied away from the town model is mostly the history. We think that the town has owned the property for 25 years, and while I think many of us feel that the town could operate, history doesn't prove it, that it can be consistent and to meet all the goals that, that we think are important to the people of North Andover. The largest one being the capital improvements, the $10 to $15 million, frankly, that are going to be needed to bring that place into tip-top shape. So that left us with the nonprofit model, which frankly, I think would require a lot of assistance and input from the town of North Andover, whether it be through private donations, whether it be through community preservation grants, whatever. I think, again, it's going to have to be a joint effort by whoever manages the estate to, you know, to get it in that tip-top shape. Otherwise, it'll just continue. If we don't find a way to be committed to those capital improvements... If, if we don't find a way to be committed to those capital improvements uh through the resources of a nonprofit such as the trustees and also through town resources, uh, then it probably will not get back to that uh tip-top, you know, beautiful, pristine condition that it once saw. So those are, so again, uh historically, we just think that we need an organization that is really stable, that has done this a lot, has a lot of experience. And who knows where that will lead? Maybe in fifty or seventy-five years, uh, the town would want to take it over again. I don't know. I mean, I think most people out there know that that was my original hope. But again, I think what is best for the estate and for the town of North Andover is to look for that stability. That's how we came to choose a nonprofit model.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate you um feeding that back again. And I'm sure the people at home appreciate it as well.
Rosemary, anything more you'd want to add or engage Andrew or Jim in regard to this?
Um, not at, not at this time. I um, I certainly do appreciate the committee. There was a lot of hard, long work that went into this. Um, and uh, now some decisions have to be made, so it's great. Thank you very much.
So that actually does bring me up to a, I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead if you, if you wanted to.
No, if you want, if you have a follow-up question, ask your follow-up question before I pull us down a different path.
Yeah, I guess the question would be and more so for the board as well as, as, as Mr. LaFond. What would be our next steps after, you know, so we've received the report. I know there's been some requests from the um uh, from the trustees to be involved as well, but um, do we want to discuss that tonight? Or is that something that we'll put on an agenda for another meeting on next step after we get the chance to truly digest the report after the presentation tonight?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was gonna recommend that we um accept the report tonight, put it on our next agenda, um, knowing that we are have requested the legal opinion about the um scope of everyone's authority and that um we suspect that the trustees may also have a communication that they want to send to us as well. Gives us all a chance to absorb um what we've learned and what was in the report, as well as the public, you know, hearing it for the first time. They want to submit public comments um for the next meeting, um, and then we kind of take steps to make decisions um after that.
Okay, sounds reasonable. Thank you.
So Jim, I, I want to say thank you. I think that um when we started out this process, we were very deliberate as selectmen, making sure that the committee genuinely reflected the broad views expressed by people at town meeting. And that it wasn't a committee made up of people who are walking and saying, let's sell it all off. And that it wasn't a committee, you know, full of, said absolutely, under no circumstances can we ever not be um the status quo. So I know that, that this, you expect as far as COVID and the, the extra obstacles. Um, that, you know, these restrictions on public meetings have uh been thrown your way as far as the committee. So I appreciate that, that you and, and your six colleagues are willing to get together. I vividly remember when this group was appointed, that it was suggested that the combination of people would make it almost impossible to build consensus. And my attitude really was that um, if the seven of you could come to consensus, then that would reflect, I think, not just the due diligence um performed by each of you, but also an end result that I think um our town would be willing to look at with a fresh set of eyes and hopefully, I think, get together and move forward collectively as one community. And um, so I appreciate that work um, that you're willing to do that and, and bring it to this point. I, I just want to ask, or just rather want you to confirm, the vote for this um from the committee, it wasn't divided. It was unanimous, correct?
That's correct. Actually, the vote at the final meeting was six, nothing in favor of our recommendation. It would have been seven, nothing, I'm sure, and not, I don't think I'm putting words in her mouth, but Jennifer Burns was, could not make that meeting. But she was one of the initial and even final drafters of the proposal. Uh, she's all on board with it. There, there was no doubt that uh a lot of us had to put aside our personal opinions. Um, I think there were probably seven opinions to start. And yeah, I, I mean, we all really realized that it wasn't about us. It was about the town and the state itself. And it is unanimous, no doubt.
So this is a process we went into where we had a lot of, I think, um, I think residents wanted it to be a more open and transparent process and wanted it to be a slower process too. And I think that, you know, they equated slow with deliberate. And I feel like you've, you've not been slow, you've been deliberate, um, and actually worked pretty quickly. Um, are there things about this process or ways that this process was executed outside of whatever restraints were placed on us by COVID that you wish had changed or that, that you individually, even as chairman, not necessarily reflecting the whole committee, you would have liked to have seen done differently or?
No, not, 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 not outside of COVID. Um, COVID nineteen did put a, you know, put a monkey wrench in the works. I mean, it just, it just, you know, first of all, um, you know, I, I liked being chair. I, I like to think that I'm uh open to all opinions and, but you know, this virtual meeting stuff is new to me. I didn't even own a laptop before this and so, you know, it's very difficult for me. I, I like meeting in person. It's, it's very difficult. We also did have um hopes of maybe having, having visioning sessions with the public. But again, those are very, very difficult to conduct, in my opinion, virtually. Uh, we're lucky we had the survey, which basically was a written format of visioning session. We got a lot of great comments from that. But no, I, I, I think that, you know, I think really, I'm, I'm not, I don't think anybody on the board, we had a bunch of doers on this committee. There was no one who really wanted to stretch things out, sit around. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had a recommendation to the select board before the holidays because the holidays get crazy. Uh, you know, COVID nineteen is slowing everything down. So we, we wanted the select board to have the opportunity to have plenty of time to digest this, to ask questions. We're happy to meet, you know, again with you. Um, we're happy to help out in any way we can. But again, we wanted to give your, your board and the people who would be involved in developing an RFP plenty of time. Uh, you know, obviously to, to meet the next town meeting deadline if, if that's if that is a deadline of yours. I mean, originally that was town meeting twenty-twenty, so. So yeah, no, there were, there was nothing that about the process other than COVID nineteen that I, that I didn't like.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that the, I'm glad we weren't aiming for town meeting twenty-twenty because I think that having this discussion on August thirty-first gives us ample time, COVID or not, to be able to to assess what those next steps should be if that involves our next town meeting. Um, what? What if any discussion has been had between you and your colleagues about what you hope, the seven of you, or even just again, you as chairman, what you hope the next steps are?
I think we feel that we've laid the groundwork and that we hope that the selectment of the select board acts. Um, and we do hope you uh act or the select board acts before the holidays. We, we feel we've generated a lot of interest and, you know, there is that question, why weren't the trustees initially interested? Why are they now? Well, you know, we, we've got a hot iron in the fire and we think we ought to act, you know, while it is hot. Um, who knows where COVID nineteen is gonna take us? You know, who knows what's gonna happen after the first of the year? Who knows if other properties will become available for the trustees to be interested in? So, you know, again, they, they do have a, a list of properties that they are interested in. So we've got one organization that's well-reputed and that is interested, so we do hope that action is taken. Uh, that would be our uh primary concern. Uh, the second thing is there are a few people on the committee who uh would, are interested in staying involved in the process. So I guess we would hope, um, you know, barring any unforeseen conflicts of interest, et cetera, we would hope that um, we would at least be used in that capacity to continue to give us some continuity in the process of developing the RFP and getting it out there.
As a, as a selectman, I'd say that I, I think it makes sense to keep you engaged as a committee because I think that even if, if we were to take those next steps and develop an RFP, um, I know sometimes things on paper don't always reflect the intention of committees. Thanks. Sorry. Um, I know that um, the intention of committees aren't always reflected right in documents. And so I, I would, I'd be an advocate for continuing to include all of you and at least some of you, all of you, I don't, I don't care which some in the process. I did, um, those are my general statements. I did have just a specific question about page three of the, of the report. And this is, I, I think a question both for you, Jim, and the town manager. Um, would we say that the, the numbers reflected in this report as far as the financial condition of the estate? That those, the historical numbers going back to FY sixteen? Um, where did those come from? And are, are you both in a, this may sound silly, but just the, the nature of the discussion over the past year and a half. I feel like I need to ask you both this. Are, are you both confident that those are the accurate numbers for the condition of the state regarding revenue and expenses?
Well, I'll give you the committee's uh position to start. Uh, first of all, you know, there are a few accountants on our, on the committee actually, and, and people who are probably pretty well-versed in financial matters. Um, it, it's, it's impossible for us as a committee to, it would have been impossible for us to make any headway if we didn't just um accept, you know, what the official numbers of the town of North Andover are. Certainly, we're not, um, we're not deaf. We understand the controversy and the comments that have been made in the public at town meeting and other places. But again, we just don't have, we didn't have the resources, the ability to, you know, conduct any type of forensic audit, you know, these are terms that, you know, we've heard at meetings, et cetera. So, you know, we looked at the, we looked at the numbers and we, we believe what the town accountant, what the financial wizards in our town have given us. Uh, and we looked at them, you know, even skewed toward what maybe the Oscar Hill trustees feel are more representative. Um, we certainly saw our issues. Um, you know, if a town is trying to um, you know, keep something in the black, to run something, you know, profitably, or to add to the enterprise fund, et cetera. You know, we, we do see some things. We, we question why in the past, you know, revenue from a cell tower, for instance, might have been diverted just into the general budget instead of into the enterprise fund since that piece of property is part of the estate, you know, and there are several questions like that, you know, I'd be lying if I said they didn't come up. However, you know, even if we skew our thought process toward that, we didn't really felt that we saw a consistent um profit or consistent uh adding of revenue to the enterprise fund, certainly not enough to uh, you know, to take care of a lot of the capital improvements that need to be done there. So a-again, um, you know, I have no reason to disbelieve the numbers that are here, but there are many ways of accounting that, you know, many accounting methods I'm just not familiar with and, and can't comment on. But I'm satisfied that the, the numbers we have gave us an idea of what happens when the town of North Andover runs it and, and what those constraints are.
Uh, just, Melissa, I wish to comment on that.
Well, I was just gonna add, this is Andrew Shapiro, um, that those numbers did come from the uh, the numbers in the table on page three came from the uh town accountant from the uh past retained earnings statements that we've received from the estate. Um, and the numbers were also confirmed after they were placed in the table format uh by the town accountant. So she was able to confirm that those numbers were accurate.
Right, and those numbers do reflect what I have received, both from the state and from the finance director. Um, as you know, we do have the Division of Local Services coming in mid-September to do a full review of the town, um, the town's finances. I have no concerns at all about them. Everything I have looked at and reviewed has been completely correct. Um, but in order to alleviate some of the concerns that we have heard, I have um requested that and they will be starting in mid-September. Um, and then as far as the, the lease revenue goes, um, if you look at the enterprise fund manual, and I know I submitted this to the trustees at some point, um, there is a question actually related to this, so apparently it comes up a lot. And it says, if a community owns property that directly relates to the operation of an enterprise fund and that property is subsequently leased, are the lease funds credited to the enterprise fund or to the general fund? And the answer to that hinges on how you originally purchased the prop, purchased the property. So if you purchase the property using the funds from the enterprise fund or you pay the debt using the funds from the enterprise fund, then the revenue from that lease should go to the enterprise fund. But if you purchase that property using general fund revenue, then any subsequent lease payments go to the general fund. And that's why it's been operated in that manner. So that's on page thirty-six of the enterprise fund manual, question number fifteen. Everybody knows. Thank you.
I didn't expect that, that of detail, but I, I appreciate that, that, that you actually, I appreciate that, that you know. And I, and I wasn't questioning, actually, still work crystal clear for people listening or streaming uh who are watching that. I wasn't questioning discussion about um how the numbers are presented. I just wanted to make sure and I'm glad that Andrew and Melissa and Jim all, numbers that you stress that you agree with. So, um, I think that's my question. So I'll, I'll end with thank you again to Jim and your six colleagues for the work. I'm sure we got to this point.
You're welcome.
Anti-Andrew Shapiro, because I know that Andrew, you know, got hired. I know that there was, we threw him in. Nothing else, you know, being placed on your plate, Andrew, during all of it, so.
I appreciate it. Jim made it easy for me though, so that he, he led, he led the committee well, so it was easy for me to work with him.
It, it worked both ways. We enjoyed working with Andrew. He's a tremendous asset and gave us great input.
Hi, Jim. I had a couple of questions for you. Um, I just want, again, thank you for the report. I think you guys did a fabulous job um with the research and everything. In your research and with the recommendation of a nonprofit, I mean, this is such a unique property um with the hundred and thirty-plus acres of, you know, trails and um conservation land, and then we have this beautiful estate. Um, how many nonprofits are out there that are like the trustees where they could kind of manage both? Is that, is that a limited pool or?
Well, I, I think it's a very limited pool. I really can't tell you. The four that we originally contacted and thought of were the Essex County Green Belt, uh Mass Historical, which is really not uh so much focused on uh open space and conservation of land, but more on historic properties than the trustees and Mass Audubon. Um, the two that really expressed interest were Mass Audubon and the trustees. Um, but you know, there are certainly, there is the nature conservancy that has helped with us purchasing open space in North Andover before. You know, again, what we were trying to do was to just take a sampling of nonprofits. And obviously, the reason the trustees came to our attention and why we worked with them so much is because of their presence in North Andover and Andover as well already. And they, they've got it here and, and locally. Everybody kind of knows who they are. Um, but again, same thing with, with the private sector, uh companies we contacted, you know, we contacted just a sampling, one that had already presented an RFP to us and another who was local and recommend, you know, who was interested in branching out and maybe recreating their model somewhere else uh besides Topsfield. Um, so again, that's, that's why we uh, we only chose them as a sampling to help us define whether or not that type of model would be appropriate for the Stevens Estate and whether we think it would be the best. So again, we did that for both the private sector companies and um, and the nonprofits. We, 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 there was just no way to go out and, and uh send out a blast to the Sierra Club, Appalachian Mountain Club, you know, all who own properties and open spaces, it just, the list is too long. But, but, but it, but I think it is a limited pool. I mean, there's just a handful of them probably who would be really interested.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, you might have like a partnership or something that where somebody's interested in the land and somebody's interested in the estate as a non, you know, they kind of have different, but you know, focuses on what they, they would be focused on.
Yeah, that actually didn't come up as much um at the board as, as a model. But uh, there is a piece of property that the trustees are involved with in the town of Lincoln. Um, I, I can never pronounce it adequately. It's either Decordova or Day Cordova Museum.
Yep.
And there's actually three entities involved there. There's the Day Cordova um committee itself, I guess, which would be equivalent to, you know, a, you know, a town committee that maybe like the Stevens Library Trustees or the Oscar Hill Trustees. Then there's the town ownership of the property and now there's the management by the trustees reservations. So again, I think our model recommendation leaves open uh any type of um accommodation like that or any type of management agreement like that. Could be more than just two organizations.
More, more than one. I, yeah, I think, I just think that we would be able, maybe it would give us more options, right? If we could make some sort of partnership with people, with nonprofits.
That could be true.
Um, but. But, and if, I think you touched on it, but if the trust, in your conversations with the trustees and the other nonprofits, they would want some financial commitment from the town, right?
No, that was not discussed. Obviously, they work in different ways. They need money. The trustees, all of their properties find a way to be self-sufficient financially. They do not fund them through their, through their general fund. So whether it be a commitment from the town, whether it be through private fundraising, which is what they do a lot, where they raise the funds, or a combination of the two, they do have to raise money. They do have to develop funds. But they did not mention that a requirement would be, you know, the town giving them any money.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your work you guys did. It was awesome.
You're welcome.
Well, I, again, really appreciate my, my fellow board members here really following through and again, thanking Jim and and Andrew and kind of marshalling this together. Tall order, it's important and, and I do appreciate the sense of urgency because timing is, is opportunity. And I think to that, we do hope to get those comments, but I, I would certainly look forward to us trying to get an RFP put together and, and get that process rolling as quickly as possible. To me, the, the things that really stand out is where there's universal agreement across our town. It's about preservation. First and foremost, it's preservation of the land. That is mission one, clear. Everybody gets that. We know that. And then the, the physical property itself, that's also a preservation issue, really. And that's a large capital issue and that's, that's, that's an unknown. Who's gonna step up? Who feels comfortable with that? And the perspective that a nonprofit could have advantages in dealing with a large capital situation as well as a, a private enterprise, that's what I think is going to be critical in how we put out the RFP. And having the, the clarity of record and the financials, I think the kind of questions we've asked here gives any party that's interested in this really understands our priorities, who and how we're going to be involved in making this decision. And I think that's really critical because, as you said earlier, Phil, it's really the next steps here are what counts. None of this really matters until there's action taken. And so getting that proposal, getting those proposals is critical. So, again, thank you. Is there any other comments or thoughts from my fellow members? Before we let, let, let Jim kind of catch his breath and, and Andrew bridge between this and this next next big part of our, our meeting tonight? Well, again, thank you, Jim, very much, and to the whole, the whole team.
Thank you for having me. Good night.
Good night, Jim. Thank you.
Okay, now, COVID update. Melissa, I thought that we're, we're paying big attention to this as some other things are happening in our town in the next couple of weeks. So what do you and Brian, what can you share with us?
Sure. So Brian, I'm gonna let you go first. You can give a quick update in the numbers and then I'll follow you up. How's that?
So, good to see everybody again. Thanks for having me back. There's always a lot going on with this, as you know, a lot of information out there. Just a quick note, we are, we're still in phase three, step one. We've been here since July sixth. The few tweaks have happened between July sixth and now in phase one of, or phase three, step one. Sports allowances have increased, some additional stuff for sporting outings and things like that. Gathering sizes have also decreased from one hundred down to fifty. There were a lot of issues last month regarding gatherings and parties and weddings where it was definitely a concern. So the governor rolled it back to limit that to fifty people for outdoor gatherings. Mass is still doing really well in terms of our overall numbers. We had three hundred and one cases today out of nineteen thousand tests. Yesterday, we had hundred and seventy-four out of seventeen thousand. So the state is down to a one percent test rate, which is really good. Testing capacity has increased and contact tracing is still ongoing and we're doing really well with that, too. They're still working on everything in terms of increasing the CTP, stuff like that, which is really good. Massachusetts has basically classified four out of the six health metrics in green as of this month. The last two are still yellow, so we've gone from three to four in green. The green metrics are basically your positive test rate, which is at one percent. A couple of months ago, we were at thirty percent. Number of patients in the hospital is down to about three hundred. A couple of months ago, we were at four thousand. So that was a huge drop in that. Testing capacity is doing really well. This month, we had a high of twenty-seven thousand tests per day versus twelve thousand last month. Contact tracing, at the peak, we had about a hundred and twenty-six cases here in North Andover that we do all the contact tracing for. We now have that down to eight active cases, so it's a lot easier to deal with eight than a hundred and twenty-six. The yellow metrics are still the number of deaths per day and the healthcare system readiness. So they're in progress now, which is what yellow means. And so right now, we have eight active cases. We had a total of three hundred and eighty-six so far in town. Our incident rate is down to one point two percent, which is really good. So as you know, you mentioned these schools are getting ready to open up in a couple of weeks. So we've been in the thick of that. We did a little bus tour a couple of weeks ago and went and sat at a desk and went through the schools. They've done a really good job working on their plans. They've done a lot of planning and been very detail oriented in everything that they're doing. They've done a great job over there. One of the things being done at the state level is they created a a rapid response committee that can go out to do testing onsite. So when the schools open up, if there are any issues, they can send a crew out to schools around the state to do rapid testing right there on site. Massachusetts also increased their Stop the Spread campaign to twenty locations from eight last month. Methuen and Lawrence both have sites here. Free testing for anybody that wants or needs it. If you're going on vacation, going to Maine, you can go get tested for free. Merrimack is back in session and then we have Andrew on for his update tonight. So they've done a great job. I'll let him get into all the details for that. One thing I will note is they're doing forty-five hundred tests per week. North Andover, through the thick of this, has done under two thousand per week, just in terms of residential testing. So they're gonna basically triple our numbers per week. So hopefully that goes really well. Brooks is also coming back online. They've done some major changes over there as well in terms of facilities, as well as their student body is all required to live on campus now. They've created themselves a little bubble. Hopefully that goes well as well. And let's see. Travel guidance was just amended this past week, so I know they added a few more states on to the lower risk state categories of Delaware, Pennsylvania, Colorado. Hawaii unfortunately has been removed from that list, so. As I said, right now, we're in phase three, step one. I don't know when we get to step two. That's kind of a, I don't know, holding pattern for a while. I anticipate that school is gonna open first and see how everything goes with this. When step two does open up in phase three, it's just stuff like indoor performance venues, concerts, theaters, and indoor recreation like laser tag or like launch trampoline parks. Hopefully that comes around soon. On another side note, we are planning our fall flu clinics. One of the things that the government did was require every student to get flu vaccinations this year. We do have our allotment from the state already. We do have some planning in the process now for our flu clinics. Been talking to pediatricians in the area about how to get this done. I think there's definitely going to be a shortage in terms of overall numbers. So we're gonna see how that plays out, but we are working on that with local pediatricians as well as other health departments in the area and the state. So that's all that I have for now for my update.
And I'll just hop in very quickly. Just so everyone knows, town hall and the library are now open by appointment only. You can make your appointment for either place on our website or by calling. We will have you attest that you have not been ill and we will require you to sign in for contact tracing. We continue to encourage everyone to please try to do all of their transact in order to protect our employees and the residents. But we are available by appointment only if needed. We are taking a lot of those appointments outside, so you may see us sitting at picnic tables. But we're doing our best to keep everybody healthy. We are planning on separating our numbers a little bit for transparency purposes, but one of the things that Brian and I have been talking about is that we will show our numbers as a whole. And then when necessary, we'll create kind of a, a second metric on our website that will show our private school numbers. And so, you know, if we do see an increase of cases due to the private schools returning, it kind of puts those numbers into perspective. So they'll still be included in the whole count, but we want people to be able to understand where those, what those numbers look like and where they're coming from. I do want to thank Rick Gorman and the Summer Fun Team. I don't think we've met since they've finished up. As you all know, they did have the best summer ever. I'm sure you've heard, I've heard. But they really did an amazing job. The fact that we had no cases, that we practiced such good social distancing and how all those kids in masks summer long in the heat, they've done better than I've done most days. And I'm really proud of all the work that they've done. I wanted to share my screen for one minute, Chris, if that's okay with you, just to show some some numbers. All right. Get a lot of stuff open here, so I'll share this one. Here we go. Okay. So, and I will be quick on these. Okay, so I just wanna, I know a lot of people have been asking about the COVID expenses and the CARES Act funding. And so right now, as you know, we originally had to apply for fiscal year twenty money already. And that amount was two hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and five cents. Of that amount, sixty-eight thousand was related to the schools and a hundred and ninety-one thousand was related to the town. We bought a lot of PPE all at once when it was available smartly. So we, we were happy we did that. Our original request for fiscal year twenty was actually eight hundred and thirty thousand, ninety-seven dollars. But the rest of that, the two sixty, the delta there, is actually FEMA eligible, and so that was knocked over to FEMA for reimbursement from them. So far, year to date, our expenses for fiscal year twenty-one is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for the schools and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the town for a total of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. We also have open POs totaling about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So when we get a contract, we tend to put the PO in the system so that we can know what we're gonna be spending total. So right now, we have about a million dollars that we've spent or that we've incurred to spend for COVID-nineteen funding. So the interesting part about that is, and I just need to move this over, is these are our funding sources. So right now, we have two point seven million dollars in CARES Act funding available. We don't know what the total about of our FEMA funding is that's available, but we know right now we've had about eight hundred thousand dollars in reimbursable expenses. The schools are eligible for an elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund of three hundred and eight thousand dollars. They also have their school reopening money, which is about a million dollars. That's about two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. And they've received a remote learning grant of seventy thousand dollars. And so if you look at that and do the math, we're looking at a fairly significant amount of money that we have available for COVID-nineteen. So I'm not nervous or anxious at all about having enough funding to purchase what we need to purchase on the town side and also support the schools in any way that they need to be supported. And, and they know that we've met daily about that. And so, you know, we're looking forward to being able to continue to support them as we move forward towards, yeah. I'm gonna stop there and come back.
Melissa, quick question. What, what is the source of the school reopening money?
So those are all, those are all federal grants that are being administered by the state.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So Melissa, when you say that you're looking, you know, that, that we as a town can support the schools and whatever they need, do we have any idea at this point? I mean, we, I've watched school committee meetings. I think that's been a, you know, a hot topic in town as far as, you know, the impact it will have on families with kids in the school systems. What are some of the things that they're, they're looking for and how can we be supportive?
Yeah, I mean, so they've practiced a lot of things already, you know, Chromebook, PPE.
Wait, can they, so they, they have purchased PPE?
Yes, they've purchased twenty thousand masks. They've purchased down, they have quite, oh, they have a lot of PPE is what they told me on Thursday. They have a lot of PPE and are ready for, for anything that's thrown at them. They've also purchased the evaluation of the buildings that they've been talking about that's due back at the end of this week. And so they've
Now, that's the, that's the HVAC, so the air quality assessment of each of the school buildings. Okay?
Yep. They purchased that using the COVID funds as well. And now we're starting to really talk about what staffing they, they need in order to implement their, their hybrid. And so, you know, we've been having those discussions with superintendent and superintendent Neely in order to back the system and finding the staffing models that they need. And obviously, they're going through their process figuring out who's gonna be remote, who's going to be in person, and what teachers they need, where their gaps are. And so we're working with them on that now. But, you know, I know when we first entered into the MOU, there was this concern about whether or not we'd have enough money for COVID. The only hiccup, I would say, on some of these funds is that they expire December thirtieth. And so many of us are petitioning the federal government to change that deadline because December thirtieth is right smack in the middle of our school year. If we, if we change strategically, I think that that bill will work out fine, but it would certainly give us more breathing room to have that number moved to June.
So the air, air quality, by the way, thank you for that advocacy, because that is a silly, I mean, we operate on a fiscal year, school goes till June, but you know, I guess DC just doesn't realize that. For the HVAC and the air quality assessment, we have a range of buildings and age. What? Have they gamed out every possible scenario and are we able to meet whatever, you know, are we able to step up as a community overall to fund whatever is called upon as far as addressing whatever those air quality, whatever the air quality studies produce for the buildings?
My understanding is that they're doing a full analysis of all of the buildings and all of the systems in every classroom. And if there is implementations that we need to put into place, we'll work quickly using the funds in order to make sure that every building is, is adequate.
Now, what role is, is, I mean, do we play a role? I know it's a facility, it's not curriculum, but I mean, that is still, it's a matter of us just releasing the funds, but it's the, the superintendent, the school committee that, that prioritizes and, and actually pulls the trigger for those particular projects.
We have a shared facility service, so, you know, there's a lot of collaboration on, on how these types of projects get done. But yes, that's a school, it'll be a school department decision on what, how to implement the plan.
Now, we, have we also, I feel like we've had this conversation before. Now, of course, we have municipal buildings that have people inside them as employees and then, you know, facilities like the library. Have we assessed the HVAC systems in those buildings as far as the quality of air and, you know, what, what have we done to address, if anything, any concerns that may exist?
Sure. We did our own internal analysis using our facilities director, reviewed the filters clean, some of the looked at filters. You can see Brian nodding along because he's been very involved in all of this analysis and has weighed in on all the buildings as well.
Excellent. I, just as a follow-up to the library piece, I know I've, I've heard it. I know that, you know, even just during our appointment subcommittee meetings, Selectman Bates and I both heard it. This question about why we couldn't progressively start to open the doors of the library a little bit more, just given that it's not a facility that sees a dramatic spike in volume as far as the number of people that visit all at once. You know, is that an option that's being entertained as far as allowing limited entry, you know, X number of people allowed in any given time? Or perhaps allowing X number of people in only on certain days as a way to allow for, for proper sanitization of the space? I mean, is, is that something that, you know, we're entertaining? And if not, why not?
So we are browsing by appointment right now. So if you go on the library website or you call, you can make an appointment for the time that you want to come in and you can come in and you can browse on the second floor of the library. We have created a small children's book area up there as well. So currently, if you make an appointment, you are allowed to come into the library and browse.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Well, it's, I think that's, you know, it's very good to have the baseline going into September and certainly the ability to break out of those two segments, I think is gonna be really important. But again, the message I get back in some real good questions here is, you know, we've, we have the resources to do the right thing. So it's, it's more really about the game plan and the execution now. That's sort of good and bad news, right? Because it's really all on us. And I think where we are at this point with the total number of cases, which has really leveled out over the past three months, really, I think, illustrates or shows how committed this community is to doing the right thing and staying safe. Now the challenges get escalated now, but I hope folks understand the community, just how many resources we have at the ready. So it's, it's, it's really up to us more than anything else. Keep us updated. I guess that's the big thing. Let us know if there are any shifts. Anything else? Any, any other member would like to add? All right. Well, let's move on then to our new business. We'll need to Uh, we'll need to, uh, vote on the national grid petition to install a, uh, underground electric conduits on Cedar Lane. Any discussion around this? I'll hear a motion then if, uh, we're satisfied.
Mr. Chair, this is Laura Bates. I move that the board has selected an approved national grid petition number two nine four nine one two two nine to install underground conduits on Cedar Lane as presented.
Thank you.
Phil DeColigero, second.
Thank you. And if I could please just have a roll call.
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Uh, the motion passes by a five zero count. Thank you. Alright, uh, we have that done. And now, uh, we have the request of Brian Wu for permission to complete his Eagle Scout, uh, project, the restoration of the benches, uh, to Town Common. And, uh, Brian, are you on with us?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Awesome. So tell us.
Um, so I was planning to, uh, at the, uh, common, there's six wooden benches, uh, they're pretty old and they're, and they're, uh, dirty. And so I was planning, um, for my Eagle Scout project, I would clean the benches, I would sand them down and then I would, uh, stain them.
That's, that's, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. And I can say as someone, I think all of us have, have kind of seen those benches and how much use they get, um, whether it be casual or even running clubs. So, um, I think it's a, I think it's a great project, great idea.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smedele, um, yes, I'd like to, to, um, make comment on Brian's decision to stain versus paint. Um, they, when those were originally put there, they were intended to, um, either sort of age naturally or be stained. I cannot remember because we had a project going over at Patriots Park at the time. But both groups decided that, um, that stain would be the better process because of maintenance. So I think that's a terrific idea. And, um, and good for you for taking this, this project on. I'm, benches used more this year COVID than I think I've ever seen before. It's great to see people gathering at the benches and bringing their own chairs and just visiting with social distancing. So I think your project though probably, when, when do you think it will be done, Brian?
Um, I'm not sure, but I'm hoping for, uh, sometime during the fall, maybe September, uh, uh, October.
Of this year?
Uh, yes.
That's, that's great. So people will continue to, to get to enjoy it. So Brian, I'm the mother of two Eagle Scouts, so I always ask this question. Uh, when is your birthday?
Uh, June.
So next June you'll be eighteen?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got a little time. I'm just going to remind you, as a mother of two Eagle Scouts, don't let it slip away from you as you're applying for college and getting, you know, you probably already have your driver's license or soon to be. It creeps up on you very quickly and they're pretty strict about that rule. So you gotta get it all done by your eighteenth birthday. So it's a great project. Thank you for taking it on and, uh, congratulations on deciding it and we look forward to you becoming an Eagle.
Thank you.
So Brian, this is, uh, Dick Valencourt, um, a couple of questions. So how many, um, other scouts are going to be involved with you? How many guys are going to be supervising for this?
Um, I'm hoping around uh, ten as a higher guess.
And, and where are your funding sources so far?
Um, I yet to plan it, but I am, uh, I'll be fundraising all of it myself. I just need to plan it out first.
Okay. Well, good luck with both of those and, uh, thank you for taking this on. I think it's gonna be well needed and it's gonna make a, a big difference, um, around the common. So thank you.
Uh, thank you.
No other questions, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Well, I would, uh, if there's no other, uh, notes or comments, I would like to hear a motion for this.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smedele, I move that, uh, request from Brian Wu for permission to complete his Eagle project restoring the benches at the Town Common.
Thank you.
Laura Bates, second.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's do a roll call here.
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Five zero. Your request has been approved. Go to it, Brian. We look forward to seeing it.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Well, now, uh, a, a, a larger project, uh, an update on the reopening of, uh, Merrimack College. And, uh, a vaguely familiar face has joined us, Mr. Mailer. And, uh, uh, please, uh, you provide us with quite the handbook, but, uh, see if in, in your own way, take us through this.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the invite. Thank you, uh, Ms. Town, Town Manager. I'll tell you that, uh, I plan on going through every page of the sixty-five page guidebook in hopes that, that maybe, uh, by midnight we'll be done. But in seriousness, my goal is to summarize and for those who, of you who do know me, that'll be a challenge, but I'll do the best I can to do that. So for those of you who don't, my name is Andrew Mailer. I'm the Vice President and Chief Business Officer at Merrimack College. I'm here on behalf of President, uh, Chris Hoppe and Executive Vice President Jeff Doggett to explain the steps we've taken over the last several months, quite frankly, to prepare the college for the return. Uh, I would note upfront that, that students have been back on campus since August thirteenth, um, and have been at varying levels of, a number of students on the campus. We've had employees non-stop over a period of number of months. Uh, on the campus, we talked about the fact that, uh, we had the longest spring break in the college's history. Approximately a hundred and seventy days, we left on spring break. We extended that spring break and didn't return for classes until a little more than a week ago. Um, but during that time, there's been a tremendous amount of work done on the campus to make sure, uh, that the faculty, staff and students are safe and quite frankly, the broader community is safe. We had the pleasure of the town manager visiting the site as the Brian LaGrasse as well. We did the same with the indoor town manager, uh, the mayor of Lawrence as well to review what's going on, on the campus. It's pretty dramatic. Um, again, it's, a lot of it's contained within the handbook. I'm looking at some of your budget spend and I can appreciate the, the challenges you have to face because we face many of the same challenges, quite frankly, in terms of dealing with, uh, students return. Uh, our investment to date has exceeded twenty million dollars to return the campus to, to a point where we're feel comfortable uh, that we're providing a quality education and a safe environment to give you some sense of the kinds of spend we have, uh, involved ourselves, of the kind of spending we've done on the campus. Um, these won't certainly total to twenty million dollars, but we've installed three hundred hand sanitizer dispensers, two hundred sanitizing wipe dispensers, we purchased nineteen electrostatic sanitizing sprayers, um, dozens of fifty-five gallon drums of dispensing sanitizer, more than two hundred plus Plexiglas barriers in offices and classrooms, three hundred and fifty-seven touchless plumbing sensors throughout the bathrooms, sixty-three occupancy light sensors, again primarily in bathrooms, hundred and forty-two uh, kick-down door stops which allow people to open doors without touching them, uh, two hundred step and pull door stops and more than three hundred, excuse me, thirteen hundred movable room dividers. And that's just a summary of really the light spend in the spaces. We've reduced, uh, the number of beds on the campus by close to two hundred. We've reduced occupancy and furniture in each and every classroom in every academic building by fifty percent. Um, we've purchased hundreds upon hundreds of signs, both floor signs in terms of social distancing. Our PPE spend, um, certainly rivals or exceeds that currently happening in the town of, uh, North Endover in terms of school districts. Pretty dramatic. And so we've taken a number of steps specific to the classroom, again, reducing density, making sure there are fewer students in the classrooms. Every teacher sits behind three rolling Plexiglas screens. Under the Higher Education Control Plan, those faculty members are still required to wear masks in the classroom as are all students. And our residence hall in terms of reducing, uh, density, which we've done, have also put dividers across between beds to allow people both privacy and to reduce the spread of coronavirus. We do not allow visitors to the dormitories who off the campus. Family members can only visit by, uh, scheduling, can only visit their particular child. You're not all actually allowed, even if you're a residential student, you're not allowed to move from one residential hall to the other. You can only cohort with your individual, uh, resident students. From a food service perspective, we're required to comply with the state guidelines as it relates to restaurants. Added seven large-scale tents on the campus, uh, with seating to allow students to pit, purchase the food, grab and go and sit, uh, outside of our traditional cafeteria, which is known as Sparky's. Sparky's has a maximum capacity of four hundred and seventy-seven seats. We've brought down the number of seats in that space to approximately two hundred and twenty-five seats. We literally spent millions of dollars in Sparky's to remove, um, the typical salad bar station because students no longer can serve their own salad. Uh, we've removed the fountain station for drinks. Drinks are pre-poured and have to be picked up by the student. So you can see the sort of dramatic undertaking to bring people back, uh, to the campus of both residential commuter and remote students. We have a number of remote students this year, more than typical, which allows them, which means they will not arrive on campus. We've implemented a, an app to change how, what happens at the gate. So we've altered the entrance and exits of the campus. We now require an acknowledgement of risk for every person entering the campus and I've been doing that for about three months and including a wellness checklist. Many of you have seen in different formats or another, all required to enter the campus at this point. Again, we've recently implemented an app. Every person coming to the campus now will have to show a wellness sort of green check that they're allowed on campus. And I think at the centerpiece of all that, quite frankly, is what Brian, I think, referred to earlier in the meeting, was that we have a full-blown testing center which has a capacity of testing five thousand people during a five-day period. Um, and we are testing, uh, hundreds of people every day and some days more than a thousand faculty, staff and students. And again, we've been back on campus in one form or another since August thirteenth. Move-in started more aggressively in August thirteenth. And, and I think as a result of that, what is called baseline testing followed by weekly uh, surveillance testing was, which required for every staff and student. Um, this really allowed us to manage the expectations, the well-being of the campus and, um, the interest of the students, staff and faculty on the campus. So again, that document that you see in front of you, there's been an update. That's, uh, the first volume, the Campus Handbook. There is a second volume that was issued in August. Uh, some of the modifications would include the governor's change in the travel guide. So we have people, families and staff and faculty and students coming from a distance. We make sure they comply with that guideline. Uh, our expectation is we'll continue to find that sixty-five plus page document to include the latest of what's happening with the CDC or the mask DPH or local guidelines, so that everybody on the campus knows what the expectations are. Every student, faculty and staff is required to wear a can, uh, mask both outside and inside the campus. We've installed, installed a departure plan requirement for every residential and commuter student. So if for some reason they did become sick with COVID, there's actually a departure plan which identifies where the student is heading as a function of being positive, for instance, back home. Um, so with that, our expectation is to manage anything that move, may move forward in terms of the virus. But I think, uh, the overall mitigation efforts by the campus have, uh, to date been very aggressive and very positive. And it's, it has allowed us to open the campus and operate, uh, as close to we can from what is known. Well, I, I was struck by what Mr. LaFon said. He said COVID, uh, threw a monkey wrench in the works, right? There's no question that COVID has thrown a monkey wrench in the works. Uh, higher red, both at Merrimack and throughout the Commonwealth and the country may not be quite the same, right? We may alter the way we traditionally do things to make sure that we're protecting people and the environment. Uh, one final item, uh, the governor issued a requirement that all, I think, K to twelve and college kids as well are received a flu shot. We had previously planned a flu clinic on campus for all of our students. That's planned in early September and we will be providing flu shots to all of our students, um, somewhere in the next couple of weeks to manage this as well. So that's a higher level summary. I didn't want to spend forever on the plan. Uh, but if you have specific questions about where do I, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smedele, sounds like a very comprehensive, um, plan that has been put together. It's certainly not quite colleges, those of us here at this meeting have, uh, know and remember it. But it's, it seems like a plan that's really going to keep students and faculty safe and keep the school operational. Um, oh, and by the way, um, uh, welcome, uh, back to your old stomping ground. I meant to say that at the beginning.
Uh, I appreciate.
But, um, it is, it's a, a really comprehensive plan. And, um, how are the students reacting to it? May I ask that as sort of an off-the-side question? Are they embracing it as best they can or, um?
Yeah, I think the best example, I think you're doing great and I appreciate, um, the comments that it is great to be back, by the way. North Endover is a, is a fantastic place. Um, I think it's all over the, you know, it's a really a wide response, right? So we also employ close to seven hundred full-time equivalent employees. We're one of the largest employers in North Endover. So if you can imagine both the seven hundred full-time, uh, equivalent employees and the students, it's just a wide range of folks. Some folks will never be uncomfortable. You're probably experiencing that in your own particular work settings, both in the town, but also wherever you work personally. There are some folks who aren't quite comfortable in returning, right? We have that both with faculty, staff and students. It may not be the environment that they're yet comfortable to return in, right? Uh, we open restaurants, meaning throughout, uh, the region in the state, and some people just don't go back yet. So I think a college in many ways is a good indication of what a small town looks like at more than four thousand people. A wide range of opinion, a wide range of comfort versus fear. And we're doing everything we can to make that environment as stable as possible.
Hey, Andrew, any updates on, uh, athletics or sports returning? I am reading the, the document and I think there was some, um, still not a hundred percent decided on yet, but any updates on, on that, like hockey or ball or any, or any other sport coming back, basketball?
It, it, in some ways, almost more complicated than some of the steps we're taking on the campus has been the athletic conversation nationally. Uh, Dick, it varies all over the place, right? Uh, the NEC has not yet made a decision. They decided at this point to defer the decision till October first. We're in the NEC as a league. Um, so we're waiting for that October first date and the presidents will get together at the colleges and make a final decision. I think there'll be an expectation of beginning of practice with some of the sports, um, in anticipation that there'll be some kind of sports. Um, but that hasn't yet been made clear. There'll be specific provisions within that, for instance, regarding testing and wellness that we'll have to implement as well. So there'll be a, an athletic specific plan. Uh, I believe Hockey East has decided to go till January is the beginning of their schedule and hopes that things are better at that time. So we're hopeful that sport at some point will eventually come back here. Um, not just to Merrimack, but across, uh, the state and the country, but we know that it's going to be some time before those answers are clear for us.
And I'm assuming when they do, it's going to be limited attendance, if any attendance, right? It'll probably be like the professionals are doing now where no attendance?
Yeah, I would think limited attendance would be, it'd be nice to see limited attendance. It may be family only as an example. Uh, but I certainly would expect, uh, at most limited attendance and possibly no attendance.
Thank you.
So Andrew, for the classroom, and I know not every classroom is, is physically the same size and they can vary quite a bit um, in square footage, but what's the average class size for the coming semester as far as the number of students allowed inside the classroom?
Yeah, it really does vary. Phil, we have some classes that normally would have held forty as an example and now they're twenty. So I think the simple, that it, it's oversimplifying your answer, but the simple way to look at it would be we're bringing class sizes down in half. So if you had an eighty-person lecture hall, that's now forty. If you had a forty-person class, that's now twenty. Add the addition of, um, we've done some of the same things that the town manager was speaking about, upgraded filtering systems within the individual classroom buildings to make sure the air quality is improved. But on average, it's a fifty percent reduction. One of the things we've done in some of the spaces that are more challenging, because some of the classrooms are more challenging to make that reduction, is we've opened certain spaces which weren't traditionally classrooms as classrooms. And so we've looked for spaces that may be large conference rooms and it made classrooms out of those. Because as you reduce that density in the classroom, what you've really done is shift students, right? You need more. You need more sections to accommodate the same population. Our, our overall undergraduate population is not down. So as you try to shift students in that category, you need to find more places to teach and we've been able to do that in most cases.
First of, that's a great message to hear that you're not down and that you're taking the type of precautions to maintain and protect the public health. Because I think we want to see every, just, you know, we have these conversations about our small businesses. And I think that we've all been reading the stories about different, you know, higher education institutions pre-COVID that just were already struggling and some that have not survived COVID and you guys are, you know, at Merrimack are hardly in that category, but hearing that you're, you're attracting, continuing to attract students at a time where I don't, I would say it's pretty uncertain, right? If you're a college student on what you should be doing right now. That's awesome to hear.
We appreciate that. It should be, you know, for those folks who don't own the college. Merrimack College is, as the president likes to say, is no longer a small college. It's nearly doubled in size in the last decade. We are a mid-sized college. In many ways, that size, the ability to have the financial capacity to tolerate or sustain what happened as students went home, right? We're able to do that better than some because we've grown to a mid-sized college. I would fully expect coming out of this, we'll continue to grow. It's our expectation, our plan. We've seen strong, in fact, beyond strong results in the last couple of months from the graduate programs. An undergraduate level, again, this year, the very solid numbers and then really beat benchmark in many capacities, but we may get some more commuters versus residential until people get comfortable again with the environment or some more remote students. But the overall undergrad population is very robust and we're very happy that that's been the case.
So this is an unusual question, but you know, we've, we've asked this even earlier in this meeting, how can we as a town work with the schools to make sure that there's a seamless transition and that the schools in North Andover are able to, you know, deliver on their promise to our student body, but also do it in a safe way for staff and for students. I mean, obviously you're a private institution, but we work closely and could perhaps even work more closely. I mean, are there are there ways that we as a community can be working more closely to make sure that, you know, public health is maintained, but we, you know, we, we do rely on the student body at Merrimack College to provide, you know, economic injection, especially to those small businesses on Route one fourteen. How can we be working more closely or what are we already doing to help maintain that relationship without compromising public health?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. And one of the things that a return to normal will allow, Phil, is that we do send a lot of students off-campus to internships in the school systems with the various businesses. We've added more on-campus jobs, quite frankly, this semester to encourage students to stay on campus. Our hope in the long term is we turn that back out to the community, but it makes sense for us now to currently do that. It is great to be back because I'm someone who's always been, as a former small business owner myself. I've always found that Merrimack, before working there, allowed that spillover of being a large employer with students, helping the local economy, right? Watching as I do come up in this area, the economy suffer down fourteen because homeowners out, right? It is great to be back and positively influence what happens on that strip. I would say, one, that I haven't had an opportunity to mention, the Department of Health, Brian, Caroline have been extraordinary. I mean, literally, there's almost a daily call from either Tracy Alberti, who the college several months ago appointed as the director of COVID nineteen surveillance. We have a full-time person focused on that. PhD RN, emergency room nurse. She works with Caroline on almost daily basis, making sure we're talking through what may be happening. Same with Amy on, on the Andover side. So I think you guys are doing that. I certainly would encourage if anybody else would like to see what we're doing on campus, if there are things that we're doing in the classroom. I think we all have, I think we're going to patent rolling plexiglass screens for teachers, which may be helpful in the school system. Something we've created on our own to help protect the environment. Maybe if you see some of the things that we're doing on campus, they may be, one, you could tell us those things that you could help us more with, but also maybe suggestions in terms of things that might be helpful in the public schools as well. But overall, the, the folks have been supportive and I continue to hope that the relationship remains strong.
And we're happy to report that we have two Merrimack interns this semester. So we're continuing that great collaboration that way as well.
Andrew, just sort of an informational question. So since the building of the new dorm, what is the split between dorm, the number of dorms in North Andover in comparison to the number of dorms in Andover?
No, Rosemary, I don't have that number. I would say the number of residential students in North Andover, it used to be the other way where there were more Andover students. I would say now that between Royal Crest, you know, I'll get that number for you. I would say that with the, with the rooms we occupy in Royal Crest plus the North Andover rooms, it has to be fairly evenly split.
Okay. All right.
Andrew, to kind of go off of the Royal Crest question, how are you guys monitoring the kids that are at Royal Crest where it's kind of off-campus and not in your bottle, in your bubble?
Yeah, it's a great question. So there's two different populations of Merrimack students at Royal Crest. We occupy, we rent as student housing through the college. Approximately a hundred and fifteen units at Royal Crest of the five hundred and I'm going to get this number wrong. Five hundred and eighty-seven units? I don't remember. So those students fall within the purview of the college. They go through baseline surveillance testing, have the same departure plan, same wellness masks, the whole bit. RRAs actually live in that space as well to provide the support. And then there are students who are commuter students, some of which rent directly through Royal Crest. Again, there's still required to sign agreements with the college in terms of expectation. That includes off-campus gatherings, testing. And so a lot of the same provisions without the direct control from the RA, right? So a number of the key provisions are still required. So if you travel down one fourteen, you may notice, don't go too slowly, one fourteen can be challenging, right? But if you, if you look at the crosswalk and look down toward the campus, you'll notice there's a table there actually with a tent. And for those students that are commuter students who live in Royal Crest, we're actually requiring them daily to go through a wellness check inside an acknowledgement of risk. Because we recognize some of those students are there as well. So commuter students are not left outside of the process. You certainly lose a little bit of that control, quite frankly. But they are still required to do things like surveillance testing, baseline testing, comply with the on-campus requirements for being safe in the classroom and otherwise. As well as, you know, the other steps like to sign an agreement to make sure that they comply with the school policy.
And that, that hundred and fifteen units that this college is renting out, are they all lumped together? Do you, were at Royal Crest, you, you know, or are they intermingled with regular renters, I guess?
There's segments that are close together and some that are a little more disjointed to the total. So you couldn't go and say, these buildings in this circle are all Merrimack.
So they are sort of inter, it's just another like mix in the community. I, I thought, okay. And just another-
Sorry, Lauren.
No, that's okay. And just another quick question. What happens if a student doesn't show for their weekly testing? Do you guys, I'm assuming you monitor that?
We monitor the weekly testing. If they don't show up for testing, then I can show you the app if, but if there was not prior to the app, because we're just rolling out the app, they literally would be notified that they hadn't tested and it, and your agreement says if they do not test weekly, they're removed from the campus. So as technology has improved and we're, you know, many colleges are working in this sort of realm, I don't know if you can see that too well, probably glare a little bit. This kind of app, which requires someone to do symptom checking on a daily basis, actually identifies the last test and all the historical testing information is in there as well. So sometimes we've done that. I did spend some time on the crosswalk last Saturday. Just to see what the flow of students was. And on occasion would ask, you know, what, how, you know, what have been your test results? And they, they would provide us with the test results. In that case, even before the app. And so it's, it's been an opportunity to allow us to monitor what's going on in terms of those test results.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, so I would just pull us all together, say, it's really amazing that the balancing act here because Merrimack has been working to integrate and connect with North Andover more than ever. But yet this requires at the moment, there to be an isolation and a segregation, but it, it sets the tone for the confidence and the partnership. And I, I think that's really important and I'm glad you're sharing all this, that folks know that you're, you're trying to, from a health standpoint, you're taking all these steps, but also I look at the way you're treating the, the businesses, that there is a way for local businesses to deliver food, for vendors to still work and provide services to the campus. I think that, that's really important. I think that's a valuable message. And again, the depth of what you put together and I that, it, it, it's really amazing. And I would say even further, it's one more reason, I think, that you can say to folks, you should consider Merrimack College. Look at how we have addressed this and how expediently. I think that's the other piece, the depth and the speed of this. And being a neighbor, literally, I have seen this. I've seen where the campus has really provided that ring, where those processes are to make sure that people are contained or work in the right flow. It's very evident from the outside looking in. So I, I, I thank you for our town. Thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate that. Again, I would encourage you, one of the, the primary initiatives, and I didn't want to spend a lot of time on it, is all that you see in this booklet is then segmented into daily emails to faculty, staff and students. Every combination of wellness initiative, everything from how to wear a face covering to just how to, you know, comport yourself in a classroom to make sure that there's proper social distancing literally comes out on a repeated basis in the form of emails and then reminders on, on the app, right? Additionally, we've created videos, how-to videos. This whole document, the handbook, is actually on a twenty-plus minute video. There's a two-minute video that explains the entire testing process if you ever want to visit our testing system virtually. And so education as an educational institution, right? Education is one of our primary goals and we're using the strength of education of the institution inward toward our students, faculty and staff to make sure we're reminding them of the things they need to do. If we can assist to Phil's point, but in reverse, if we can assist in any way to take that kind of model that we're using and help the community or anything that's happening in your community, the greater North Andover community, we're more than happy to do that and demonstrate any way that's possible.
Thank you. We may. We may very well.
You know how to find me. I'm not that difficult.
Any other questions for Andrew? All right. Well, we'll, we'll cross the bridge over to the, to the future, which is now the proposed master plan. Redevelopment of Royal Crest Estates, which kind of tags into this. And I believe Michael Lorenzo Lozano, I'm sorry, of Trinity Financial and some other representatives are going to give us a preliminary presentation of the plans for the redevelopment of Royal Crest. And so again, this is just an introduction for us to sort of just absorb the initial thoughts on it. We thought tonight would be a good night to kind of piggyback on the update of Merrimack and looking towards the future. So let me turn this over.
Hi, hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to give a quick intro and then turn it over to Mike. My name is Jim Keefe and I'm principal of Trinity Financial, which is a Boston-based real estate company. Almost three years ago, we came before your board to tell you that Aimco, the owner of Royal Crest, asked us to, engaged us to redevelop or reimagine Royal Crest Estates. I don't think it's a big surprise to many on this call that this place needs attention. And the first place we went is to renovate the existing apartments. But by the time we get into many of the details, the fact that it's way out of compliance in terms of ADA, energy conservation, life safety issues, the fact that it's fifty years old, the infrastructure, the, the shell and core of the buildings themselves. And by the time we get into the details, we realized that that approach was going to be cost prohibitive. In addition, just renovating the existing property would just bring it back to that classic seventies era and not really respond to today's market needs. Not to mention it would preclude any opportunity that there may be for us to accommodate Merrimack, our neighbors across the street and their growth. And we've been working with them almost since that meeting three years ago to try to figure out a way to incorporate them in this. So I'm going to leave the description of the master plan to others. I just want to say in this, this COVID virtual world we're, we're in right now, it's really a challenge to fully express our enthusiasm and our commitment to the success of this. But tonight, tonight, we're going to do the, the best we can. We've got a great team. We've got John Martin. If you guys could raise your hand. Got John Martin, who is the master planner. He's a principal at Alkerson and Freddie. We have Peter Tam, who's doing a lot of the legal work from Goulston Stores. We have Chris Lovett from VHB that's done a lot of the traffic work and other preliminary engineering. We also have a couple of guests from Aimco. We have Patty Schrader, who's with us from, from Denver. We also have James Wang, who's with us from New York. And last but not least, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Lozano, who's a vice president for development of Trinity Financial. And he will be the project manager on this project. Mike, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind if I shared my screen?
Please.
All right. Thank you. Just one moment here. All right. Can people see? I think it's just taking a moment. Can people see this now?
All good.
Okay, great. So, you know, just quickly, you know, I'll just run through this presentation quickly. I know that it's getting late and we want to, you know, leave plenty of time for questions and comments, but really the, the vision for, for the new Royal Crest is that we're looking to, you know, create a new vibrant community. You know, specifically, and as Jim mentioned, you know, Royal Crest is fifty years old. It's tired. It's really at the end of its useful life. The new Royal Crest is going to, you know, help meet the market demand in, in North Andover through a mix of uses. We're introducing or planning to introduce some retail, some hospitality space, some office space, along with some residential. But we're looking, you know, right now it is all residential. It's all multifamily rental real estate and we're looking to introduce a mix of uses. One of the primary goals and one of the, and I'll get into this a little bit more, is we want to preserve open space and provide new recreational opportunities for the surrounding areas in North Andover. And lastly, you know, and as we just spoke about, Merrimack College is, is one of the fastest growing colleges in America. And the new Royal Crest will help serve their needs. So for those who aren't familiar, although I think most people are somewhat familiar, Royal Crest is on Route one fourteen. It's, it's over seventy-six acres. So it's a very large parcel. There's over fifty buildings, garden-style apartment buildings and associate outbuildings spread all over the site. There's very poor vehicular and pedestrian circulation. There's lots of impermeable paving. As of now, there's over a thousand cars parked on the site. And there's very poor drainage. That is something that the site has struggled with for a very long time. And I know that people in the town very much know that and we know that. And there's really no sense of place. It's, it was planned in the seventies and it's, you know, it's definitely of a different era. You know, these are just some images of the existing property. You know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not terrible, but the buildings themselves, you know, again, there are lots of issues. The apartments themselves are very small. They are not up to current standards. So again, to reiterate Jim's point, even if you were to renovate these buildings, you, you, it would be very, very difficult to do so and bring these apartments up to current standards. There's a lot of environmental issues just with asbestos, code upgrades that need to be done. They really are at the end of their useful life. So this is what we're proposing and I'll get into a lot of images to sort of show people what we are thinking, but we want to make it a vibrant place for people to live, work, shop and, and really enjoy. This is the master plan as we envision, envision it now. And really it is, it, it, it's organized around a couple of things. In particular, what we're looking to introduce is what we're calling Newtown Green, directly adjacent and across the street from Merrimack College. This is an open green space. It'll be highly programmed and open to all. Around the perimeter of the site, we are looking to preserve a very significant Uh around the perimeter of the site, we are looking to preserve a very significant green buffer and preserve all of the existing trees around the perimeter of the site. So and I'll show some images of that, but you know, really, the site is oriented towards Route one fourteen and Merrimack and away from the surrounding neighborhoods. So it's there, but you you won't really know it's there, or at least not so much more than it exists now. Uh there's extensive wetlands around the perimeter of the site, and we'll be preserving and enhancing those. Uh and we are looking to introduce a new walking and bicycling path along the rear of the site, so you can get off of one fourteen. And it'll, you know, it's a nice new amenity that we're envisioning for the site. Uh around the the town green, uh in purple here, would be a new boutique hotel um of about a hundred rooms that we're looking at um that we think would be very exciting, and we hear that there's a very strong demand for it in town. Um in blue is a new student village that we are working very closely with Merrimack on. So as you just heard, there's this, there's a a pretty large number of students that live at Royal Crest now. And the this new student village would accommodate those. The college would would maintain uh very uh greater control over that student population in the in a building that they would control um and and operate. Um in purple, over to the south of the site, we are looking to introduce a commercial office building. Again, the mix of uses. Uh around the the town green and on the ground floor would be retail. So we're looking at sort of you know, national and local retailers that would occupy that space. Um to the rear of the site in yellow is a townhouse-style um housing uh with a clubhouse. And then lastly, there would be a a building that we're looking at age-restricted rental housing in. And then lastly, we'd be introducing uh new um multifamily rental housing, again, oriented towards Route one fourteen and Merrimack. Uh and as you go to the rear of the site and towards the perimeter, the scale of the building starts to um to step down. So these are just some images that we wanted to show about what we are thinking for the flavor, the the feel of the the new Merrimack. Uh that I'm sorry, the new Royal Crest. Um this is what the town green would look like, and these are, you know, images of sort of precedent communities that have already been built that we know are successful. And this is the type of architecture, the sort of planning and public space um that we're really looking to create. Uh again, this is just a diagram that shows uh the preservation of open space around the perimeter of the site. We have the new town green. There's a new park that we're looking to introduce towards the rear of the site. And then within the courtyards of all of the buildings would be some more private but green space. Um so again, looking to really um really preserve that and and augment that. And this is an image, you know, again, it was really important to us to provide that buffer to really preserve the feel of Royal Crest as it kind of exists now, but, you know, introduce these new uses and make it productive again. So this is an image, you know, preservation of the wetlands, introducing this new pedestrian and walking, uh pedestrian and bicycling path, but really preserving all of these sort of mature existing trees and providing that green buffer uh between the surrounding neighborhoods and and, you know, this new development. Um that's very important to us. Again, some precedent inspirational images that we've been using, um and we've been working very closely with our landscape architect, Copley Wolf on this. So this, these are the types of spaces that we are really looking to create. Um again, I mentioned the sort of existing drainage issues, so we are and have done preliminary engineering to make sure that we accommodate all of the 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 required uh stormwater retention onsite. Uh and we also, you know, it's very important to us to introduce a lot of sustainable um both energy and just environments with sustainable practices and 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 around drainage is an important one. So we're looking to integrate those into our landscape design. Uh we just wanted to quickly show some images of the type of architecture that we're we're looking at introducing, both Aimco and and Trinity. Uh take the the architecture of our of our projects very seriously. Uh these are not, we're not proposing cookie cutter type of buildings. Um you know, we really want something distinctive. Uh we want to create a a really distinctive public place. Uh these are just some images of um sort of the townhouse-style buildings, again, sort of stepping down the scale as you get closer to the surrounding neighborhoods. And these are sort of images that we're that we're utilizing as inspiration and what we're sort of looking to create for the student village. So again, really creating some distinctive architecture here, something that, you know, people both who would live here and people in the surrounding area and throughout North Andover could be proud of. Just a an image sort of showing the ground level retail and some of the buildings. Again, these are, you know, as you get closer to Merrimack and and Route one fourteen, we're looking at four and five-story buildings, and they step down as you get, you know, again, towards the center of the site. And um, you know, it's important to us, we and we know that traffic is always a very uh significant and important concern. So we've been working really hard um to minimize impact that this would have on traffic, but also to make Route one fourteen safer. So we wanted to work um with our consultants, with Mast DOT and with the town, and we have been doing that for some time to make sure that we maintain, anything that we do maintains traffic flow, but makes it much safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. A- as as Andrew Mailer um mentioned, you know, there's a significant number of students who pass between the the current Royal Crest across the street to to Merrick to Merrimack. And um, you know, one of our primary goals is to really make that crossing safer. So we're introducing a new signalized intersection here and enhancing the signalized intersection over here um at the south of the site. So that's very important to us, but we also want to like make Route one fourteen nicer. So we've been working closely with the, you know, the consultants and Mast DOT to sort of enhance that. So this is a view actually looking uh south along Route one fourteen. So as you, as you can see, again, we really want to preserve any mature trees that we can uh create a screen, but introduce a nice wide buffered sidewalk, um set the buildings back um and and create like, you know, what will be a nice edge to the street and and hopefully make it feel much nicer than it does now. So just very briefly, I'll just kind of, you know, tick through the benefits as we see them. You know, again, this is a unique mixed-use, mixed-income in- income community that we're looking to introduce here. It will generate significantly greater tax revenues for the town, which I can get into. You know, it's going to create a significant amount of of open public space, improve the buffer areas between the site and the adjacent neighborhoods, and improve and preserve the current wetlands on the site. Very importantly, it's going to accommodate partially the the future growth of Merrimack College. It's going to have some high-end retail users as well as a boutique hotel. I I spoke about, you know, how we're looking to enhance and improve Route one fourteen. Uh it addresses many points in the town's master plan, specifically as it pertains to housing, affordable housing, economic development, and open space. Uh we're going to create some new homeownership and rental opportunities. As I mentioned, it's all one type of housing now, but what we're proposing is a is a variety of housing that really responds to what we've heard is um is the significant need in North Andover, some some age-restricted senior housing, um some some for-sale housing for young families um that will, you know, allow people to stay in North Andover that otherwise might be priced out. Um it'll make a significant contribution to the town's workforce and affordable housing stock. Um and we can get into that a little bit later. We're looking at utilizing perhaps a friendly Chapter forty B approach to one portion of the site. Um and one of the great benefits we see to that is that 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 will allow the town to exceed the ten percent threshold, which will give back control to the town for any other future unfriendly Chapter forty B um proposals. And um lastly, while we are, you know, we're we're proposing more multifamily rental units than exist now, uh the current Royal Crest is five hundred and eighty-eight units, and all of them are two- and three-bedroom units. We will not have more two- and three-bedroom units than exist there now. In fact, we're going to root, we're planning to reduce the number of two- and three-bedroom units and introduce more smaller units to accommodate a greater variety of um of household types than exist now. So um I'll pause there. I'm going to turn it over to Peter Tam for just a moment to kind of explain sort of the process and what the ask of 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 the members of the board will be and the process that we envision for um, you know, getting this um through the approval process at the town. So Peter, if you want to take it away for a moment.
I will, and to the benefit of the chairman, if I could interrupt just for a minute, this is Andrew Mailer. I just wanted everybody to know I didn't have a chance to sort of tee this up front. Merrimack has obviously been involved and is well aware of the proposal that you're looking at this evening. Um we believe and we're encouraged and want it can be to the broader community, not just to Merrimack College, but also to the town of North Andover. And, you know, we've been engaged in a in a regular effort to make sure that it continues to move forward for that benefit. We could build additional housing on our campus. Um but we think there's a better play here, and that is to leverage the financial strength of the college uh with a development opportunity to make sure there's a broader benefit to North Andover rather than focusing on our own housing, our own campus. Um I know all too well uh the positives and negatives that Royal Crest presents, but this opportunity is is a really fantastic opportunity for the community, and the college would rather invest in the community than investing specifically on its campus without the the longer-term benefit of what could happen across the street.
Andrew, thank you for that, really.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Really, uh that that's a really important point, and we appreciate that. So Peter, if you want to just jump in quick.
Or Mr. Chairman and and members of the board, thank you. Uh for the record, I'm Peter Tam. I'm an attorney at Gulson and Stores, and I'm uh outside counsel for for Trinity on the project. Um thank you. Um I think, Mr. Chairman, you you mentioned this uh as being an introduction, and it's quite an introduction, and I know there's a lot of food for thought, but in in brief, um Mike and Jim and the Aimco team have been looking and studying and improving upon this conceptual master plan for the past couple of years. And that plan has benefited and has improved based on input from stakeholders, including some uh in the administration and some some discussions with staff. Also, they've begun discussions despite the pandemic um with some stakeholders and and folks in the neighborhood who will continue to play an important role going forward. We'd like, and we're we're starting with you as a as the first um public board to meet with, because we think the selectmen play an important role uh in this process. Ultimately, to realize this master plan will require a a rezoning, and what we're contemplating here, subject to your input uh and and further thought, is that we continue uh to meet with your board, with the planning board, with the Conservation Commission and other boards over the coming months with the goal of getting to a town meeting next spring for a new overlay zone that would encompass the entire site. That overlay zone would allow for this broad mix of uses. It would be uh focused on a development plan. Um we've done this before and successfully to allow for economic development and revitalization in large, complex projects like this. So it would give the developer flexibility, but that um development plan, combined with the zoning structure that we would work with the planning board and with you all on, would be approved in conjunction with a development agreement. That development agreement would be negotiated with the administration and with you and with council. And that would ensure that what we represent in the development plan is what you're going to get. So this is a large, complex project with a lot of different pieces. It uh the development agreement would specify the phasing. It would specify the mitigation. It would specify the protections. It would get into detail on um construction and sequencing. Um and and that's what we would like to be doing. We would like to be working with the planning board in the coming months and and staff on the zoning and and developing an overlay that that the planning board can support. We'd like to be working with you on the development agreement. And that would get into the weeds um on mitigation and protections as well as um it obviously the the plan itself would would become relevant. You'll need to have an understanding and a better understanding of each of the different components. And then lastly, as Mike touched upon, there'll be a multifamily component which we would, which we would like to work with you uh the selectmen on um to work under a comprehensive permit. And the reason for that is uh that will be uh a one element of this master plan. But as a multifamily element, it will ensure that the town meets its affordability requirements and the statutory minimum. It will be consistent with the town's housing production plan. It will ensure that all of those rental units all count on the town-fundized housing inventory. And uh it will also enable us to work with the Conservation Commission to improve those wetlands to the rear of the site by moving three isolated small wetlands that are in the interior, completely isolated, and that do not currently provide meaningful wetlands uh value. And so by by moving those and expanding them in conjunction with the existing wetlands, they'll be highly valuable for habitat, for flood protection, for all the values that wetlands are important. And um by doing this under a comprehensive permit, we won't be inhibited by the limitations under the local bylaw. So uh that's something that we'll be working with your Conservation Commission and your Conservation Administrator on. Uh we expect to have a breakout, small group to be working on that issue in particular. But as Mike and Jim have pointed out, every piece of this project is going to make this site better, um both for the town, for the community, uh for the students that are across the street. And and the wetlands and sustainability is cer- is a is a critical part of that. So we have a lot of work to do, and I think as by as an introduction, this is this is the first meeting of many. I know uh Mike and his team have been working hard um to engage stakeholders in the neighborhood virtually. Uh and and we'd hope that as as this year ends and next year begins, we can be having some of these meetings in person. So um uh thank you for giving us a little bit of time. I'm sure you have a lot of questions, but obviously questions relating to the master plan, I I would expect um will also be addressed at future meetings.
Well, I appreciate the tremendous, uh you know, uh you're really hitting us with uh with quite a bit to digest. I'm going to just turn this over to my uh my uh fellow members here and just um go ahead.
Yeah, so this is the, I guess I'll kick it off. Um so how many approximately, I know, I don't know if you've got to finalize yet, but how many residential units are we talking about? How many units are we actually, multifamily units are we talking about?
Yes. So for multifamily units, we are looking at nine hundred and ninety-three. Again, a mixture of studios to three-bedroom units.
Um what what's that mixture? Do we know?
So that's something that we're still working on. Um right now, it looks we're proposing four hu- I I can give you sort of some rough numbers. We're we're proposing four hundred and fourteen two- and three-bedroom units of that nine hundred and ninety-three. And the remainder would be studios and one-bedrooms. Again, we're still fine-tuning plans as that, as it relates to that unit mix. But again, we're committed, it's important to us to make sure that we don't exceed existing number of two- and three-bedroom units.
That's the mind. Are those going to be four? Are those going to be four- and five-story buildings as well? So what I'm sensitive of and what I've been uh what has been communicated to me by neighbors in recent years is the um the reduction of the barriers between Royal Crest and some of the neighbors that abut Royal Crest, specifically Montero Way, Quail Run.
Yes.
Um you know, we have a school that abuts that property. So
Yes.
There's been, in recent years, there's been some work done that There's been in recent years, there's been some work done that's uh reduced some of that buffer zone. So I heard what you're saying, that you're going to be restoring some of that buffer zone, but you know, of course, these neighbors are not used to seeing four and five bed, four and five uh story units in there or buildings in their backyards either. So be very curious to see and hear the plans on, and you don't have to say it tonight, but I think it's something we should can we should certainly address and and make people aware of what those uh buffer zones are going to look like and what what they're going to be comprised of. Are they going to be fencing? Are they going to be greenery?
Yeah.
How tall are they going to be? Are they going to block the view of those buildings? Um, you know, those type of things, because I think that's going to be one of the major concerns we're going to hear from the neighbors, uh the abutting neighbors. And and again, specifically, we have a school there. So you know, what's going to be in those those zones and um and where are the residential is going to be located with respect to the property? Are they going to be more to the back? And I'm assuming more to the back and all of the commercial will be up to the front and close to one fourteen.
Yeah. So so again, uh most of the multifamily residential and certainly the more sort of um intensive uses, like the four and five story buildings will be focused towards one fourteen, the front of the site and Merrimack College. And as you get closer to the rear of the site, the perimeter of the site, again, the building types step down and you get to more, we're we're proposing townhouse style units, um sort of as it abuts uh Montero Way and Quail Run. And we've actually, I've actually, and Jim and I have spoken just last week with with a neighbor who lives on Quail Run. I've spoken with a neighbor on Montero Way. We know about their concerns. Um, we 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 hear them for sure. And again, in anticipating that really, you know, we are looking to create a really significant buffer there, introducing fencing. We've heard about the problems of the existing Royal Crest with people crossing the property lines into people's backyards. Um, and that's something that people have struggled with for a very long time. Um, so it's something that we're really looking and we know about, and we'll certainly accommodate that in this master plan to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay, I I know exactly who you talked to then. Thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
Just as a follow up question, what what is the the target audience for these five hundred plus one bedroom and studio apartments that that we think that there's this need or that I should say, if you're planning this project, that you think that there's this need. And I mean, that's that's not meant to sound fresh. I don't I don't I don't
Yeah.
Curious to understand. Um, just curious to understand your thought.
Yeah, you know, the first thing I'll say is that it it sounds like a lot, but you know, one of the things, or there's a couple of things I I think that are important to keep in mind is that, you know, again, it's a very large site, so it's seventy-six acres. Um, two, you know, we're not planning that this is going to be built all right away. I mean, right now, there already are five hundred eighty-eight apartments that have been there for fifty years now. So we do there's five hundred eighty-eight units that exists there now.
But those are two and three bedrooms, correct?
Those are two and three bedrooms, yes. So Aimco, Aimco and Trinity, you know, Massachusetts has a housing crisis right now. I mean, there is no doubt that there's a housing crisis. There is an incredible demand for all housing types across Massachusetts. So you know, we we see there being a demand certainly for a a mix of housing types and you know, that's what we're looking to introduce here. You know, there there's there's certainly a strong demand and it's not really met right now for smaller units, for younger professionals who, you know, want to live by themselves. They don't want roommates and they can't afford, you know, a two bedroom unit, so they will, you know, take a a one bedroom or a studio. And we see that across um many of our markets, including here in North Andover.
When you say that you see it in North Andover, what's the study that backs up this um perception? And only because I I I know that, right? We tend to hear that there's a lot more desire from individuals looking to live in studio or one bedroom apartments that they're looking to transition to a more urban setting. And I mean, there's still smack dab in suburbia where public transportation is pretty weak. And so um, I mean, five hundred studio one bedroom apartments. I mean, that's a lot in a community that, I mean, this isn't Boston. It's a community that has twenty-two thousand housing units. Um, no, that's not accurate. That's not twenty-two thousand. I'm sorry. Um.
Yeah.
So you know, when you talk about adding five hundred one bedroom and studio apartments, I just want to understand if, you know, if that's if it's reasonable to expect that those will actually house one to two people, assuming couples.
Yes, we do. We 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 have, we have done a market study and we do and have had, you know, a third party consultant do that study and and believe that market is there. And we do believe that there are, you know, one and two person households that uh that want that housing and want to live in in North Andover.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Medley. Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of, you don't see me on the screen. I'm uh I just haven't set up a um laptop with a a visual. So for, if you're looking for who's speaking, you you will not find me there. Um. So a few, a few things. Um, my first reaction is that we're talking about a thousand units um altogether. We have about, what would you say, a quarter mile stretch of one fourteen that will take in and exit the traffic from that site, not to mention the college. And you might not be aware of it, but perhaps you are. North Andover is a big rectangle. And our two main roads that kind of run throughout the entire town are Route one fourteen and one twenty-five. And that's a lot of traffic to disperse to our residential area. And it's also something of a cut through area from the north shore, let's say even as far as up to New Hampshire. So I have real concerns that a couple more traffic signals is not going to quite do the trick. Um, we already get lots of complaints about the traffic on that stretch during commuting time. Um, my other question, you don't have to answer them all tonight, but I'm just gonna, you know, does any part of the Dover amendment affect this project?
No, we're not planning on using the Dover.
We're not a Merrimack is not acquiring the property, so there's not a Dover application here.
Okay, even with the college dormitories and things like that, none of it, the shopping center.
That's right.
Okay, um. So what's the percentage of the the number, how many? How many dormitory style units for the students and how many are those? Um, are they in the nine hundred ninety-three or is that a separate amount of residential type housing, some for students? And then the nine hundred and ninety-three unit for citizens.
Yeah. So the 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 student village, as it's currently proposed, would house a thousand students in two phases. So the initial phase, as we've discussed it with Merrimack, would be for seven hundred and fifty students. And the remaining uh phase would be for two hundred and fifty students in, you know, apartment style, suite style um living arrangements.
Okay, well. I think we still, it's it is very interesting, but I still think we have a lot of work to do. Um, and um it's it's a very big project.
Yeah.
And it seems to be quite residentially dense and in a very short strip of road. Um, and it's concerning. We've one terrible tragedy there. We certainly don't want more.
Yeah, and I and I and I will, um, you know, just to address a couple of your of your concerns, just, you know, we and we absolutely hear you. Um, and and, you know, we share, we share the concerns as as you know, and as you just noted, there was a very tragic traffic fatality uh on one fourteen. And um, you know, that's one of the primary things that we really want to address is improving. We want to maintain traffic flow. We know that is very important, but we also want to really improve the pedestrian experience and safety on one fourteen. But beyond that, you know, we've already done a traffic study. And you know, we've looked at what we're, you know, comparing what we're proposing to what exists there now. You know, our engineers tell us that the plan will only have minor impact along the corridor of the study. You know, there is one location that there may be some some impacts, but overall the impacts are expected to be very minor, even at the peak travel periods. Um, we've been working really closely with Mass DOT and the town. Mass DOT has a very extensive uh reconstruction project planned for Route one fourteen that addresses a lot of the existing um issues with one fourteen, but also accommodates um our proposal. So we've worked really closely hand in hand with them as well as engineers from the town um to make sure that our plans fit in with their plan so that any traffic impact is really minimized. Um, and then lastly, just to address your 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 comment about the density and that, you know, it's it's a lot. And it is, it is a lot, but it's also a really large site. And you know, we we've run some numbers and, you know, it's for comparative purposes, the density of the proposed plan is actually very close to recently approved developments in North Andover. So you know, the Avalon proposal, which I'm sure everybody is aware of, you know, our residential density as we're proposing right here is very, very close, not to what they first proposed, but but what they were actually approved for. So I think, you know, one thing, you know, they're very different sized sites. There's a lot going on there. But again, we're not proposing that this gets built all at once. We're talking about an eight to ten year timeframe that this would get built. So it takes, you know, it's not all going to be dropped on there.
So Rosemary, yeah, sorry.
Well, again, can um just speaking about the stretch of road, let's say from Stop and Shop Mall all the way down to, say, the Market Basket Mall. That is what, maybe a mile, maybe this, I'm counting quickly in my head, ten existing traffic signals, nine or ten. And I don't, I don't know. And to add that amount of traffic in such a small space of area as runs along where um Bertucci's up to say, the end of Royal Crest to is for all that traffic to be coming in and out of there. My other concern is in that, one that I'm sure that you you have thought of, or if not, you will be thinking about, is the impact on the schools. As you duly noted, we have several rather big projects ongoing in North Andover right now. And over a thousand, almost a thousand units is going to add um a a lot of strain on the school. And we are very well aware of the state needing affordability. What you might not be aware, however, we haven't reached our ten percent, but the town of North Andover has grown in huge amounts, outpacing many other communities that um will never really have to deal with affordable housing because there are already dense, some very nice communities. We seem to be being hit rather hard right now. And these are all the things that's going to have to be addressed or I think you're going to run into um a rocky road ahead. This part of the project are very interesting, very exciting. I'm certainly open minded to it. You you would not know this, but um I'm very familiar with that site. My family has had housing in that area. Um, I've grown up along that, very familiar with Merrimack College and um, and we certainly want to continue to do its very best.
Yeah.
There's no question in my mind. I'm I'm telling you, it's it's very dense. It's very dense in the housing. Um, and not even to mention that you're talking about a hotel as well. I mean, which is great. We don't have a hotel. But again, it's had more traffic.
Yeah.
So Michael, if I just could
Yeah, please.
Just next steps to the town, just because, you know, this is a a lot to absorb, I think, uh
Yeah.
and and to Rosemary's concerns. So the next thing that we'll do internally is start to put together um a negotiation team. Um, a member of the board, um town council, me, Andrew Shapiro, um the people from the planning board, et cetera, who will start to work with the team at um Royal Crest, talking about what the zoning will look like, sign to review their fiscal analysis. I'm really putting together a preliminary fiscal analysis on our end as well. What are the impacts? What are the impacts for revenue? What are the impacts for our expenditures? What are the impacts for school students? What is the impacts for police, fire, library, recreation? Really boiling it down to what are the benefits and what are the burdens, right? And so that we can really take this project, encapsulate it and fully understand it, right? Right now, we're looking at pictures, we're hearing numbers, um but be able to really understand the story is going to be really important for the board before they can decide whether they support it, don't support it, want it to change, et cetera. And so we're working on a tight timeframe, right? One of the things that I've kind of stressed to this poor group last time I met with them, um is that, you know, you don't want any surprises at town meeting. And so this is something that we start to work on really quickly so that we could get you good information and get you answers to the questions that are in your mind and are on my mind. Um, and so I think Royal Crest should probably become a constant, right, at our meetings every two weeks as we're starting to digest this information and get it. And I think what we're getting today, right, is really a high level um introduction to something that's exciting, but also can be daunting. Uh, but we'll work on trying to get that down to the facts and the numbers so that we can really process it.
One last thing I'd like to just add that I did say, one thing that strikes me with great interest and perhaps maybe other people, it would be great if the town of North Andover finally gets to our ten percent because we are being inundated with projects over the last few years that hasn't really moved us forward at all. It's actually set us back. So I find that of great interest. I find the relationship between the town of North Andover and Merrimack College is for the most part, been very, very positive. I would say really the most part. Um, and we'd like it to continue. I mean, the hotel is interesting. There's some very interesting things about your project is the town manager says, we we all have a lot of work to do. Um, and uh, and I hope that we can all uh come to an agreement that we're all happy with. So I I don't want to leave you with a sour note as I question you with some questions, but
We appreciate that.
This is a very high level meeting. We are very uh sensitive to the fact that there's a lot to take in. There's a lot of moving parts. We've been at this for three years, so we're a little bit ahead of everybody else in terms of understanding what its impacts are. But I just want to assure you, on behalf of the entire development team, we'll do whatever it takes. We will meet, we will study, we will research, we will bring in the necessary consultants to get you the information that you need and for us to get to a place where everybody is as enthusiastic about this project as we are. I know that's a tall order. I know tonight, there's lots of head scratching, but uh we've been at this uh for for quite some time and we think it's a great project and our challenge is to convince you it's a great project.
Thank you.
Your challenge is to convince the whole community, not just us.
I hear you.
For sure.
Voice of reason. So uh just one final comment from from Merrimack here. We we appreciate that, having first seen this in some form or another three years ago. Um, the challenges that that certainly come from large scale development. Um, I do go back to what Jim Keith said and and Mike have said. If if you strip down the site, sometimes, you know, I I suffered from this a little bit. I I would drive by Royal Crest and think it was the three buildings closest to one fourteen. And then that was it. Because the nature of the construction with these nineteen seventy styles building, we thought it was just a couple of places. And then I walk around uh the site, uh based typically on Mr. Valancourt calling me and suggesting I do that, especially on the back end of the site. This is a massive site and and it will be at some point or another redeveloped. It's just logical, right? The college has to expand. If we don't expand there, I will expand on campus. We currently represent more than twenty percent of rental property on that site. I don't know what happens in this environment. If we move completely, this is part, part of the reason we want to partner with the town is we think there's a benefit to the to the town to partner as opposed to just staying on a site and creating more density on our site. So uh, we uh seem ready to work with the town. I I hear Rosemary's and the rest of the board's concerns, seem ready to work with the town and the developers to get through this complex conversation. Seem ready to work with the town and the developers to get through this complex conversation. Uh, we understand it's complex. I asked that everybody do what Mike and Jim did though. Look at the site as 88 clear or 80 clear cut acres and can imagine, uh, we all would want to put certain buildings on the site. But as we all know, development isn't a function of what this group of folks want on a site. It's where the market drives the site, right? And so again, we're here to help in any way that's possible and we understand there's a lot of work to be done.
Thanks, Andrew. Okay, I think that.
Any other?
I'm sorry.
No, please, anything you want to add, Jim?
No, I, I, I just wanted to wrap up. If there's any other questions, please, you know, we're, we're all here together.
Well, I, I, I really appreciate it. And, and for an initial kind of throwing this out to us, it's very apparent there's great sensitivity to all these things that connect with our community, connect with our, our neighbor at Merrimack. And that I really appreciate that there's, there's a forethought and understanding that creating affordable housing in our community is, is very important, not just for the 40B, but literally for people who live in this community to have a place that they can afford, that they could stay or even own, to create, uh, some commercial opportunities as this community grows. Wonderful. And to figure out a way to really upgrade, uh, the housing for our community and service Merrimack. You've created a very big smorgasbord for us. And I, you know, I know Melissa and Andrew, um, are going to have a lot of work on their table. The only thing I would ask you, our experience from very large projects, and you've heard it from Melissa, is communicate, communicate, give us updates and keep this thing rolling because there's just stuff that happens that we all have to contend with here. And, uh, I think it's a great goal that we're working towards, towards town meeting. Uh, I like the concept of it. So let's go.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. We very much appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
I know. Good seeing you, Andrew. All right. Well, that's, that's, that's really exciting. Next on our, uh, tonight, uh, we would like to discuss amending, um, the mission statement for the Commission on Inclusion, Equity, Diversity, and to include membership, uh, from one LGBTQ resident. And, uh, select board member, Decollagero, I think really has, uh, championed this or brought it forward. So, so I'm going to just turn this over to you for a moment.
Well, this was a collaborative effort, um, on the part of myself and Selecting Bates. Laura and I are, um, the board's appointed members of the Appointment Subcommittee. Um, we had a chance to speak, uh, sit down with and speak with quite a few interested members of the community who wanted to serve on our commission on diversity and inclusion. Um, it, I almost even want to say it was referenced at one point earlier in this process, but it became, um, throughout these interviews, a glaring omission that we did not include, um, a representative for the LGBTQ community. And I think that the initial intent of this board was that we didn't want to just keep adding folks to this committee. However, um, I think that there's a rational explanation, um, for why it really doesn't matter jumping from 18 to 19 members, um, in the grand scheme of things, especially if it means, um, placing a point of view present around the table that, um, I think we all agree is a group worth, um, worth having and, and, and accessing that perspective. And so, um, when we first created this committee, I think that all of us, um, in, in communicating with the town manager, I talked about the, um, hope that this committee would not simply be a one and done, but be something that would be a living committee for this community as we constantly strive to do better. And so it doesn't make sense, um, I shouldn't say that. The, and the feelings were that it didn't make sense to continue, um, on forming this committee without, you know, plugging this hole from the get go so that way everybody was starting off together as opposed to trying to backfill and, uh, potentially duplicate, um, or revisit work that these volunteers will already be doing at the onset. So Laura, did I, did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so. I think we just, um, you know, as we started to talk to, um, everybody that was willing to volunteer and, um, what has showed interest in the board. I think we just recognized that there was, we, there wasn't a mission on the board. And I think that, like you said, starting, um, having that point of view from the get go is important.
And, and so, um, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I would motion, um, that we expand this committee to include a seat, um, designated for that perspective, the LGBTQ perspective, um, and ask the board to, um, support the, support the expansion of the committee to include that perspective.
Any other board members would like to speak to this for a moment?
Um, my, my only concern is that I'm not saying that I would not vote for this. I'm not saying that at all. It's a huge committee. They're going to have to work in subsets in order to get anything done. It's a, it's a very big, one of the biggest committees I think I can think of right now, um, that, uh, we've had for a project that, you know, is, is important. So it, it's a, it's a large committee. It's, um, and I think we're going to talk about the, the interim chair, who's got to be good and experienced. So I think when we get to that, we'll all agree that the person being recommended would be a good person to, uh, to do that. But it is, it's a very large committee. That's my biggest concern.
That poor lady was on vacation last week, so she may just be finding out about her. Welcome back.
Oh, dear. Surprise.
Actually, that was a true statement. I just saw my name on the agenda.
There we go. Okay.
I think it's a, it's a great addition and I think it's, um, although it's a big committee, all right, so it makes it an odd number, which is a good thing. And also I think, as Rosemary stated, there's a lot of work to do. So with a lot of people, they can break it up and, and get, you know, really address a lot of concerns in a lot of different areas. So I think it's a great addition. Um, I think it's a, a committee that is deserving of a lot of people. Large number, so I'm all in favor of it.
I, I would just add, absolutely. I think by definition, we look at what we created here. It is a, an omission, um, right, right from the start. And I look at other large committees like the Patriotic Committee, and they're large because we want to make sure it's inclusive. And this by definition needs to be an inclusive and expansive, uh, group. And, uh, so I'm excited about it. I think, um, you know, we've got some, you know, really great folks who have already stepped up. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, Laura and Phil recognizing this. And, uh, you know, let's, let's do this, as they say. So Phil, did you kind of put a motion forward for us?
I think I put a jumbled motion, um, to expand the committee to include a seat designated for a person, um, from the LGBTQ community.
Okay.
Laura Bates, aye.
Great. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote if we could, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil Decollagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Uh, passes a five to zero quote, uh, vote. And, uh, we've expanded our committee. So thank you, and we're looking forward to it being filled. And to that, we have our, uh, three members that were chosen. Uh, we have, uh, members that are chosen by their boards and, uh, we want to make sure they're appointed. So maybe I'll turn this over to our Appointment Subcommittee, if you would, uh, carry us through the, um, board appointments and then the citizens, if you want. We have, um, Stacy Leibowitz, right?
So it, so it appears based on the agenda that we have the Commission on Disabilities have appointed Stacy Leibowitz. We have the Race Amity Club that has appointed, um, seems to be, um, the youth in our creation council appointed Larry Allen. And, um, the Appointment Subcommittee, so that's myself and Laura, um, sat down, as I mentioned earlier, over the course of several nights this, um, these past few weeks, we sat down with a number of folks. And, um, after speaking with them, um, we are, um, asking that the board appoint Lena Hunter as a representative of the minority owning community. Um, Tony Wedge, um, resident member of the, and Vijay Blahle as the second resident. And two of those three also have English as a second language. So I think that collectively they bring a really interesting set of perspectives. Um, Tony, although she occupies the residency, is herself a business owner. Um, they were just some really interesting conversations. I, I, it was a really neat opportunity. That's just how that's, I think, I think that's the best we can grab from it with. And it's exciting to see so many people interested in getting involved in town. And, um, hopefully we continue to keep those who had expressed an interest and just, we don't have room on this moment involved in, in other ways. So, um, what's the seventh category is, uh, as the interim chair of this committee. When we created this committee, I think the expectation was that this committee select their own chair as the size. And the fact that most of these people won't be familiar with each other, it's, it's not fair to put 19 people into a room together and say, hey, which one of you are going to be in charge? And, um, I actually think it places at a disadvantage to residents because there's a chunk of the membership that are town staff and so have a working relationship and familiarity with each other. And so we just, this is a reflection of our committee, um, select a permanent chair within 90 days. Um, ideally, though not requiring, but ideally volunteers as that person, so.
Okay, you broke up a little bit there, Phil, but I think we, we, we got that. Other questions from the rest of the committee? Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that. And again, all these folks stepping forward. Can, um, I have a motion to, um, appoint these folks.
Um, I would like to, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the board's select one, appoint Stacy Leibowitz, Larry Allen, Lena Hunter, and Tony Wedge to the Commission on Inclusion, Equity, and Diversity for a term ending June 30th, 2021. And, um, Vijay Belila and Sabra Ganti for a term ending, ending in June 30th, 2022.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, uh, Tony Wedge, um, I'm going to recuse myself from that vote. She is a fantastic person and a wonderful pick, but she is married to my first cousin. I don't think that requires me to recuse myself, but I would prefer to do that. So if you could just remove her from the motion so that I might vote on the rest. But if she's, I will say that she's a fantastic pick. She's a lovely, lovely woman and, uh, will serve that committee well. But I will recuse myself from the actual vote.
Mr. Chair, you can take one vote and we'll just mark in the, um, minutes that Rosemary has recused from that item.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Happy to accommodate Rosemary. Um, so I just, I need a second, if I would.
Phil Decollagero, second.
All right, and just a roll call vote if we would, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil Decollagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. This carries by a five to zero vote. Welcome aboard, glad to have you all. And, uh, then as, uh, Phil had noted earlier, we talked about our, uh, Dee becoming our interim chair. Thanks for volunteering. Uh, so we just need to do that formally if we could.
Thank you for the vote of confidence.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the board's selectmen approve the appointment of Denise Casey as interim chair of the Commission on Inclusion, Equity, and Diversity for a term ending November 26th, 2020, or until the commission selects a permanent chair, whichever is earlier.
I will check that.
All right. Thank you, Rosemary. Uh, and roll call vote if we could, please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
We don't normally appoint chairs. And, um, is this the interim chair only until the board actually meets to appoint a chair? Is that the intent of this appointment?
No, it would be the hope that, that this person would be, um, that Dee would serve with the individual to replace or to be picked within 90 days. So that way this particular committee could get up and running. So that way it didn't, um, it didn't place the resident volunteers at a disadvantage where, you know, you're going to have 19 people who aren't familiar with each other, all entering a room at once and expected and are rather tasked with, you know, tackling a pretty complex topic. And a big chunk of them are going to be town employees. And so rather than have it skewed towards, you know, the group that, you know, is already familiar with each other, it gives the residents an opportunity to become invested and, you know, everyone to get to know each other's strengths and hopefully a resident stepping up as a volunteer to lead the committee.
Okay, so a little more than just when the board meets or more when the board meets and starts going through the various phases of forming and storming and everything. And then, then when they get to know each other, they, they can vote for it or, or appoint their own chairs, what we're saying. Did I get that?
Yeah, the hope was, and I know it's not hyperlinked, so I don't know, I guess it's not in the backup docs, but that the, that Dee would not serve more than 90 days in this role.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I think we're saying.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, y'all? All right, so the motion on the table. Uh, roll call, vote if we could.
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil Decollagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Deely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. And by five to zero vote. Uh, congratulations, Dee. Here's the chair for the moment. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to chair this very important committee. The chair, very important committee.
Thank you, Dee.
Thanks, Dee. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, one more, uh, appointment, uh, to the Board of Registars. So we've got a packet, uh, is a letter from the Democratic Town Committee with three names brought forward for appointment to the Board of Registars. And, uh, as a board, we must pick one name from the list. And, um, this will run, a term that'll run from April 1st through the following year. And I think this is also kind of a little cleanup of our process too, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, town manager? Setting the term, clarifying the term?
Yes, this will clarify the term as well.
Great, great. So I'll open this up to the floor for, uh, a nomination.
Mr. Board Representative Smith Deely, um, I, uh, will make a motion to appoint Eileen Kelly for the, uh, the position. Um, I'd like to just make a quick comment as to, this is, um, a position that was, they asked us to consider to appoint Eileen and Eileen Kelly. And I think, so what has been done in the past for a very long time out of respect to the various, uh, political committees in town that we, and I always thought it was the right thing to do then, and we strayed from it a little bit, is that we allow the prospective committee to weigh in pretty heavily on the one that they would prefer. And I think, having said that, I've supported that in the past and I'm supporting it tonight, but calling attention to it was, again, in the spirit of, of democracy and fairness, that, that this continued to be a normal practice, that unless somebody is not worthy, that I think, um, those who are in the opposite party, such as myself, um, would, would respect the wishes of the Democratic Town Committee. And therefore, that's why I am making, um, offering this motion.
Well, thank you. So I have a second.
Phil DeColigero, second.
So any, any discussion based upon Rosemary's comments and Phil's second? Other than the technology weighing in?
Right.
All right, well, if there's no discussion, I will then ask for a roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Eileen, congratulations, and by five to zero vote, all set there for the registers. Next, we have a discussion about rules for, as was, I think we had a public comment tonight earlier, about mobile food vendors. This is an update of our rules and regulations from February twenty-four, two thousand fourteen. And then we've got a redline version in our packet. From what I can see, it's kind of a somewhat organized reorganization of things, some clarification, and also addressing on private property. But I don't know, Town Manager, if there's anything more you'd want to add to this to start our discussion?
I'm going to have Laurie address this because she drafted the guidelines and this is her project. So if you don't mind, I'll.
Absolutely, Laurie.
Okay, thanks. Basically, all we're doing is trying to right now, for somebody that wants a mobile food truck permit, they have to apply to the Board of Health and to the Board of Selectmen for a license, whether it's on public property or private property. So what this does is we've combined the application to one. Once, if you approve these regulations, then we'll, we'll get the application live. It's been drafted. And the regulations are basically removing the requirement to, to have a Board of Selectmen license if you are on private property. Really, it's, they only come to you if they're going to be on public property in a public parking lot. But as private property, you can hire your own food truck to come to your graduation party or whatever. You don't need Board of Selectmen approval. You just need the Board of Health approval.
Thank you. Makes sense, huh?
It does make sense and thank you to Laurie for doing it. It makes a lot of sense. I think we have enough regulation as it is so that, and I think she's correct, it's private property. We shouldn't be interfering with, with that as long as we have the Board of Health. So I'm feeling very good about it.
Yes, so that's the only really substantive change, Laurie, in here is really just removing the need for a permit from the Board of Selectmen if the food truck is on private property.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Melissa, just more broadly, I know you said this during public comment, or you mentioned that Nadine from Pipe Dreams Cupcakes had weighed in via email. There's no regulation that we could, as a Board of Selectmen, change or adjust that, that would impact her because her license was authorized before twenty fourteen, which is by act of town meeting. Effectively.
Right, you can't take action to supersede town meetings' action without town meetings' authority. So her license would stand.
Thank you. And thank you, Laurie, for this work. I think it was described as your baby by your superior when I asked her about it, so.
Thank you.
So do we need to take a formal action and vote on this, or only when it's completed? We do?
No, the, the regulations are completed. The application will just tidy up and put online.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we accept the regulations as presented on the agenda and move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, let's do a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye, and five to zero. We've approved the change in the regulations for mobile food trucks. Okay. Reassignment of board liaisons. So recall last year, our former chair organized us into liaisons for the various boards and committees we have across town. And, you know, it was, it was a good process of discussion. And of course, with her departure and Laura stepping in, we sort of are faced with the choice of either kind of re, reallocating this, or Laura's sort of taking the handoff for the moment and thus maybe in a future meeting, looking at maybe codifying this process a little bit more. So I would ask Laura's indulgence if you would be willing to just kind of step into those liaisons for the community, the CPC, the Cultural Council, the School Committee, and Youth and Recreation Council.
Absolutely.
Are you willing to step?
I am, I look, I look forward to working with those boards.
Okay, all right, you've taken the task and the duty. Good, I appreciate it very much. But I do think, just for future reference, I, I think we could probably do, now that we've got one year under our belt here, maybe kind of tighten up the process a little bit and see if there's anything that we want to do to reshape this or make this a little more effective going forward. But it certainly, I think, has been valuable in the past, past year. Any other thoughts from the board? Okay.
Is there a process to organize, Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, is there a process to reorganize every year, or is it just kind of how it goes?
This is our first year doing it, but typically what I have done in the past is I've best reorganized when we reorganized. So when you get your new chairperson. This year was a little disjointed from where we typically would be with town meeting and the election being paid, et cetera, et cetera. So we didn't reorganize as, as cleanly as typical. But typically, what I would suggest is that when we reorganize, we also do these liaisons, please, on assignments and re-qualify any of our policies so that the new board members have weighed in and agreed to them as well. And so we'll try to clean that up for next year a little bit.
Thank you. Sounds good.
All right. And our last, under new businesses, planning board request to update planning board filing fees. My understanding is that there's no increase in fees. It's really kind of the application and the where they apply more than anything else. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so there's one clarification of when you need to apply. And then there's two new fees that, they were new bylaws that were passed recently, but a fee had never been placed on them. One, for instance, is land disturbance. And so they're basically making those as two new ones, but there's no increase to any of the fees.
Okay, great, great. And so I just need, so is there any other discussion or questions around this from the board?
No, I'm glad that we did not raise the fees, considering all that's been going on with COVID and everything else, all the setbacks we've had. So I, I appreciate that we have not raised the fees.
And Town Manager continues to do a good job of kind of cleaning up these pieces, which I think ultimately make it more efficient for our citizens and our businesses and a clearer path. So between the work that you're doing and Laurie, you know, you, you can see it incrementally building. So I'll hear a motion then on this?
Laura Bates, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the revisions to the planning board filing fees as presented.
Great.
Phil DeColigero, second.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye, and five to zero vote, motion passes. Thank you, appreciate it. And I just need a motion to move into licensing now, please.
Mr. Chair, will we move into licensing?
Thank you.
Laura Bates, second.
All right, and roll vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye, and in licensing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will start the meeting by the statement that is to be made by the chair prior to the public hearing. Hold on a minute, no, let me backtrack. So we will start with a public hearing. Public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one forty-eight, Section thirteen, license for storage of propane gas at Rocky's Ace Hardware, fifty Peters Street. So I will now read this, the statement. Persuading to the Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC thirty A eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteen, twenty twenty, order imposing strict limitations on the number of, of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of North Andover is being conducted via remote participation. No person in attendance of the members of the public will be permitted. But the public can listen to the hearing while in progress by tuning into Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at www.northandovercam.org. Members of the public attending this hearing virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for the public comment by emailing selectmen@northandoverma.gov. Okay, so the first item is, hold on, I've got a lot of papers to shuffle here. The propane of the, at Rocky's Hardware. I did speak to Laurie Berzleff a little bit about this. I had a few concerns because of the parking situation that we've had in the past at Rocky's. And also making sure that everything is in order. Rocky's, as everyone knows, that mall is very tight on parking and they have this property along the side that did, was used for employee parking many years ago. So my concern is, where is this being done? But Laurie, if you wouldn't mind filling the board in what you filled me in with as to why this really doesn't apply. And we did get confirmation by the town building inspector. So if you wouldn't mind doing that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, do you, do you want to open the hearing first?
Yes, of course. So I will entertain a motion to open the, the public hearing.
Chris Nobley here, motion to open the public hearing.
Laura Bates, second.
We have a motion and a second. And I will entertain, oh, let's do, all those in favor say aye.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedele, aye. So that was a five to zero vote. Okay, so we are now in the public hearing. And Laurie, will you just kind of fill us in as to where this is and why this is a little different than, than most of our votes, because it was already in existence, so.
Sure, yep, so the reason why they applied is the fire department was discovered that their permit didn't allow them to store empty containers along with the full contained propane containers, because you couldn't tell which ones were empty and which ones were full. So this just allows them to expand the number that they're storing to include those tanks. And I confirmed with the fire department and they had indicated that there's no expansion of their current gated area. I think you all are familiar with Rocky's. It says a gated area that they have the propane stored at. They're not expanding that at all. It's really just a formality to get their license in tune with what they're actually doing.
So this is almost more of a, an important housekeeping matter.
Correct, so they can comply.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain us to move to close the public hearing.
Move that the Board of Select, this is Chris Nobley. Move that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing to receive comments regarding the application for a license to store propane gas at Rocky's Ace Hardware, fifty Peters Street.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Richard Valencourt, I'll second that.
Okay, I will entertain a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Laura Bates.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedele, aye. Okay, so now we need to vote on the license for the storage of the propane gas Rocky's Ace Hardware, fifty Peters Street, now that we've closed the public hearing. So I will entertain another motion.
Chris Nobley here, vote to approve the license for storage of propane gas at Rocky's Ace Hardware, fifty Peters Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Laura Bates, second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedele, aye, again, passes unanimously. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, hold on, let me just get to that. Request for Smolak Farms. Request for Smolak Farms for a three, one-day wine and malt application from Smolak Farms. The events are part of the Wim Dinner Series to be held under the tent on September ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, from five thirty to nine P M.
And the Board of Health has reviewed all of the requests for their use, as well as how they're set up and approved, all of that. They have successfully, already had two.
Okay. I will entertain a motion unless somebody has a question or that they'd like to ask first.
This is Chris Nobley. Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as a licensing commissioner to approve the request of Smolak Farms for three, one-day wine and malt licenses for the Wim Dinner Series on September ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third, twenty twenty, from five thirty P M. to nine P M., with a maximum number of people at the event of fifty, including staff and subject to compliance with all executive orders issued by the governor in effect at the time of the event.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, very well done.
Okay, I was thinking the same thing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedele, aye, passes unanimously. Now, I will now entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
Chris Nobley here.
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, Chris Nobley here, move to close a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Laura Bates, second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye, roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye. We are now out of licensing, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, thank you. All right. Approval of our minutes, the first two, pretty straightforward for our open session minutes of July twentieth, twenty twenty, as written, and the open session minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty, as written. Any questions or comments, changes? Okay, everybody's read it all, so I'll take a motion then.
This is Laura Bates. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of July 20, 2020, and August 10, 2020, as written.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Rosemary. Okay, and roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Oh, that's right. I'm in order again. Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. That passes five to zero, approval of the minutes. And now we've got a point of cleanup for executive minutes, going back to February 25, 2013, and December 27, 2013. And I would just ask the Town Manager to give a little perspective so the public kind of understand why we're going back seven years.
Yeah. So Town Council and Lori and I have been going through old executive session minutes and making sure that they were either one approved or two approved and released. So typically, what I have done in the past is that you have an executive session. The next time you meet an executive session, you approve the meetings from your last executive session, but you don't release them. And then at a later date, when the controversy is done, you vote to release those minutes. And so let's, for example, if you had a litigation, right, you would have your meeting, you'd approve the minutes at your next meeting, but you wouldn't release them until that litigation was over, right? Because you'd be giving out your secrets with your council and everything else. So we have found some minutes that have not followed that procedure, and we're still digging through many of them. And Lori and I have been discussing, perhaps just bringing an entire book to you to make sure they are codified correctly, because, you know, the Attorney General can be very upset with you if you don't correctly follow this process. So these are two that have been flagged by Town Council as being certainly over and being able to be released to the public.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yes. And to add to that, so you do not have to have been present at a meeting to approve the minutes. That is not a legal requirement of approving. Obviously, only two of you were on that committee and have actual knowledge of what was discussed at those meetings. You're not certifying the minutes to say that that's exactly what happened. You're approving them as they're being presented.
Well, that's good, because it would have been quite a quiz for Dick and Rosemary. Okay. Tell us what happened.
I actually did, years ago, did a major housekeeping of executive session minutes with our Town Council at the time, and weeding out the same thing. It was a lot of work. It was like reading a novel. Sometimes it was quite interesting as well. So I applaud this work. And as our Town Manager has said, it does need to be done. Every once in a while, you've just got to go through everything and say, this is finished. You're allowed to release it. It's the personnel matters that are of a confidential nature that can kind of stay in the background for a while. But thank you for doing it. It's a lot of work.
Well, why don't you give us our motion?
Here we go.
So there's the two there.
All righty. Board of Selectmen, I approve the executive session minutes of February 25, 2013, and December 27, 2013, as written.
And I'll second that.
Thank you for stepping up there. And roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. And we have these executive minutes now in the books for real. All signed up. Good. Consent. We have a donation of historical quilts from the Historic Society to the Stevens Estate. Very much appreciated. I think there's some nice photos in our package. We very much appreciate it. I didn't know if there's anything more that we would want to add to this, other than our appreciation?
I know.
With that, I'll take a motion. Yes?
Chair, I'll move we accept the donation of the North Andover Historical Society of Quilts to the Stevens Estate.
Great.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Our roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. And by a five to zero, we've accepted the donation. Thank you very much. Okay. My goodness, what haven't we reported on? What is, what old business is out there? Do we have any? Nope.
Well, by the beginning of this meeting till now, it is old business.
I think we've taken more, I have to wonder when the last time there were so many roll call votes in one meeting. You may be setting a new precedent here.
I was thinking the same thing.
So Town Manager, we've covered a lot, but is there anything that we haven't?
Just four quick things. Real quick.
Yes.
Thanks to Lori and Steve Foster. We have gotten the Green Communities Grant, which is very exciting. $125,000. We're funding a middle school LED lighting project, a high school LED lighting project, a library LED lighting authorization project, and an elementary school authorization project. So very exciting. And thanks to Lori and Steve for continuing to guide us on those. We are reporting that revenues have been tracking really well, and we're looking forward to seeing the September 1 analysis, which will allow us to know whether or not we can move forward with our new initiatives. I'm feeling very positive about that. Andrew Shapiro has been, is going to be attending the Suffolk University MMA program for certificate in local government and management, starting soon. We just found out that he stepped into that program. Dee teaches in that program, so we're very excited to have him doing that. It's going to be a great resource for the town. And Free Cash was certified at $10.8 million. Kudos to Lynn for all of her hard work. It's one of the earliest I've seen Free Cash certified, and certainly goes to her diligence and excellent record-keeping. So thank you.
That's impressive, where we are financially and where we are, you know, where we are working. Select Board member updates or notes, reports? Going to go around the horn?
Well, the Town Manager and I accepted the invitation of the School Committee and took the ride along. We were supposed to kind of represent the children with the new COVID practices from the bus all the way into the classroom, and then leaving back on the bus, as the children will, to practice the, you know, the COVID precautions. It was a very interesting session. It was very informative. And they seem to be working quite hard. I think one of the most interesting things to me, which I did like, is, and some of the parents and grandparents will kind of find interesting, that the children are now back in rows instead of in group seating, in order to make the practices safer. There's, actually, there's two tables, you know, or desks, even though that they're sitting at one, but the other desk makes the classroom feel a little bit more full and kind of reminds everybody to, you know, to keep a distance by having that extra desk there. It was very interesting. They're working very, very hard to make this efficient and safe for the children to be part of that hybrid program. So I found it interesting, and it was kind of fun, too. I don't know if the Town Manager has anything to add.
No, I also really enjoyed it, even though everyone kept trying to steal my homework on the bus. We had a lot of fun, and it was really informative. And I, as a parent, after going to visit the school, felt more secure, less anxious, and more comfortable with what school is going to be like in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Much, pretty much appreciate the cooperation. And just as an aside, I know, Melissa, you and Lori and Dee have really worked hard to support our superintendent in schools and offering resources, expertise, and they couldn't have a better partner. So thank you for that. Thank you. I just had a couple, two quick things. One, this is also, this seems to be Andrew's night again, but we had the Master Plan Implementation Committee finally had our first meeting on August 20. And Andrew and Jean Enright did a fabulous job in sort of getting us connected, getting us going. It's really an exciting group. The questions and sort of the thought process really got us going. Our next meeting is going to be on September 24. I hope people tune in. We're going to be working on setting our priorities and voting for Chair. Dee, we promise not to loop you in. You already have a, you've already gotten your assignment. But it's really, it's really fascinating. And I hope, especially with this project that's come forward tonight with Royal Crest, how that kind of integrates to it. So there's really a lot going forward here in our town. And the last thing I would note, a little bit of homework for everybody, because school year's starting. If you haven't done your performance evaluation for our Town Manager, yes, it's been a year. Hard to believe. You didn't know what we had in stock for you? Surprise! So if you could all-
That and Mother Nature, yeah, with all the problems that we've had.
That's right. That's right. So if you could all get that to me, please, by the end of the week, so I could put this together and we can do this for our next meeting on September 14. And hopefully, we will get that one done in certainly well under three and a half hours. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Mr. Chair, I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Laura Bates, second.
All right. And our roll call, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil?
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, yes. We'll just assume Phil abstained. And with that, I will say thank you. Good night. Appreciate everybody's good work and attention. Take care.
Thank you.
Night now.
Have a good night.
Good night. Night, everybody.